Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Um, can you hear me okay? Can I get a thumbs up if you can hear me? Awesome. All right. Thank you. We'll go ahead and call this meeting of the PPLD Board of Trustees order at five o'clock PM. It looks like we do have a quorum, if I'm counting heads correctly. Um, so we'll go ahead and get started. First of all, before we start, we do need to ratify the meeting as being online, so I will take a voice vote on that from members of the board. Um, so all in favor of ratifying the board attendance being online this evening for for the reasons stated previously, um, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Alright, that has been, uh, the motion carries and we will go ahead and move forward. Uh, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Uh, if we could have the flag put up, please. Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. A nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice. Great, thank you. Alright, and then before we get started with the business of the evening, I did want, think it was appropriate to call, um, for a minute of silence. We've seen a lot of, um, tragic news in our community and nearby, um, with the Evergreen shooting at a school there and the assassination in Utah, among other things that we've seen, just violence in the news in the last couple of weeks. Um, so I did want to call for a minute of silence, just to reflect and remember, um, the, the victims, their families, and everyone affected and harmed by, um, the violence that we've seen. So we'll go ahead and do that now. As we, our hearts go out to those who are, who are suffering, um, today and, and for the next, um, you know, days, weeks, months, years, um, from losses that they've suffered. So, thank you all. We'll go ahead and move on to, um, any items too late for the agenda. Do any board meetings, uh, board members have any items too late? If not, then we'll, we'll move on to, um, consent items. Any, um, oh, excuse me, not consent items, correspondence and presentation, uh, that is by Timothy Allen.
Julie, may I interrupt, please? Um, Scott Taylor is trying to log in. He's been having some technical issues, but he will be here as soon as he can.
Fantastic. Thank you. Right, um, Mr. Allen.
Good early evening or late afternoon, board. Um, just wanted to take a moment to give you guys a presentation and update on what we've been going through as far as looking for benefits for, uh, PPLD employees for the 2026 year. Um, got a presentation I'll share here. Alright, um, so we went to market this year to search for new in, insurance providers. Um, PPLD has been using Cigna as our medical and dental insurance provider for more than a decade at this point. We have a fiduciary duty to examine other offers, um, to make sure that we're offering the best plans at the best prices that we can to our employees. So we went out with our information, we compiled our relevant claims history, our census and other data to send to the market. Um, and the result of this was that, um, Cigna came in at a seventeen point nine nine percent increase over last year's premiums, which is exceedingly high. Aetna came back, they were competitive, but we had concerns regarding their network provider access, so they would have, they would have required a lot of disruption as far as employees, um, needing to find other medical care doctors. Uh, United Healthcare's quote came in, it was uncompetitive, their rate offerings were really high. And Anthem came in, it was the most competitive primarily due to their offer of a rate lock on their administrative fees, which Cigna had been increasing on as quite regularly over the last few years. Anthem's offer in total included a three-year rate lock on lower administrative fees. And initially, this is going to be enough to overcome the costs, um, a couple hundred thousand dollars that would be associated with leaving Cigna. There was a hundred percent pharmacy rebate, which resulted, which would result in progressively less expensive rates compared to Cigna, since they do not offer these pharmacy rebates to their clients. And there's an exceptional ninety-eight point percent increased, uh, network disruption report, which basically what that means is that Cigna provided, um, as a list of all the doctors that our employees are seeing, visiting regularly. And we gave that information to Anthem, who compared it to their network coverage, and it turns out that ninety-eight plus percent of the coverage was that, so fewer than six PPLD employees would have to make a change to their doctors or providers. And there was no increase in the premiums to employees for switching to the equivalent Anthem plans, because we will be going from four plans offered by Cigna down to two. The bottom line on costs turns out to be that, um, when Cigna heard of our possible departure, they offered, they lowered their rates, which when was coupled with not having to pay the fees for leaving them, it eliminated the immediate savings for switching. However, Anthem's lower administrative fees and their rate lock and their pharmacy rebates will ensure growing savings over time to PPLD. So not in the immediate, well, it costs less to switch, but over time, next year and in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, we would see, uh, savings over sticking with Cigna. As far as the dental insurance is concerned, PPLD currently offers dental plans through Cigna, which are not available if you do not also use them for medical. So we were looking at other providers there, and we're looking at a switch to United Concordia. Um, they also have a discount plan similar to what we have now through Cigna, which would re, result in a slight increase um, in the costs, but it also has more robust benefits for those who choose that plan. And the PPO plan equivalent would be an increase in benefits to our employees while reducing the premiums that they pay. The vision insurance, we would just renew a VSP, it's not a problem as we have in the past, the no change to the current rates, yet we will increase allowances for glasses and contacts from one eighty to two hundred per year. Um, nice little boost for employees seeing those changes through the economy. New York Life Insurance Long-Term Disability, we still have a rate guarantee with them through twenty twenty-seven, so there's no change for that. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. We have our insurance brokers on the meeting here as well, and if you have any questions, we can answer them for you.
Is this still going to be part of our self-insurance pool, or is that changing at some level with this switch?
Yes. We will still be self-insured.
Alright, thanks. It's the only question I have.
Right. Any other questions from the board? Alright, if not, then thank you, Mr. Allen, for that presentation. It was very helpful. Glad to see how we're being able to, um, take care of costs and also take care of employees at the same time. Alright, we'll move on to reports, the Internal Affairs Committee.
Sorry, I had to unmute there. Um, let me pull up the my little notes about that real quick, so I make sure I say the right. Pulled up Public Affairs. Uh, we did talk about two, um, I had pulled up the right agenda, I could tell you exactly the names of the two policies, or the two, um, items that we talked about, but we're going to talk about them later. Sorry, this is incredibly hard doing this on my phone versus having my paperwork right in front of me. Um, let's see. Here we go. So we talked about, um, the, um, Penrose Exterior Safety Improvements, which I believe we're hearing tonight, and the, um, proposal to partner with the Colorado Energy Office, which we're also going to talk about tonight. I know Michael Brantner will be bringing both of those, um, to us later on. And that was it for us.
Great, and Public Affairs.
So we, uh, met and had a presentation from Wayne Williams and a couple other community members. They've been doing some, uh, research and some polling on a potential ballot initiative for the district. Um, it's been a really helpful thing for us because we can get some polling information without having to, to front the bill, so they've been this is a, this is a community group that's seen need for increased funding for the library, and they've taken, uh, an asserted effort to try to help make that happen. Um, I think most of the people who were on this call were involved in that. Um, but just as an update, um, it really comes down to, there, there were two broad questions that they asked. One was if we don't raise taxes, and one was if we raise taxes. Um, there wasn't anything specific about bond, uh, language, which is something that had been asked of them to, to pursue. Um, and so we'd have to do additional polling a little bit later, if we want to get better ideas of what that would look like with a more specific question. Uh, if we are able to talk about a ballot initiative without raising taxes, it was about a little over seventy percent favorable. Um, if it was going to be raising taxes, then it was about a fifty-fifty split. And that fifty-fifty split was actually under fifty percent. It was around forty-seven percent that were in favor and opposed to it, with, you know, a handful, um, and so effectively, um, we've got some people looking into the legality of what the language would need to be around a ballot question. We'll have to do more polling in the future to see if that's how we want to actually move forward with more specific, uh, ballot language when we do that polling. One thing I thought was interesting was when they talked about cost, uh, he was, um, it is not cheap to go, especially because we're almost countywide, uh, within El Paso, so that helps increase the cost. But he was saying that sometimes the, uh, odd year elections, you can get a little bit more um, cost savings with that. So just something to think about for us as we move forward, but it was a insightful presentation. Um, not as definitive as it would have been, we would have liked, but, um, insightful nonetheless, and I think there's, uh, some more conversation to go on if we can, uh, fine tune what a question might look like for the future.
Alright, thank you. Alright, and then Governance Committee. Um, I'll go ahead and give that report. Um, so Governance did meet, we discussed some of the um, questions that came up on, um, just the, the review of the bylaws. Looking at those again, some of that will be up for discussion later this evening, um, as well. I think the, the third agenda item down there. Um, so just looking over some tweaks to some changes, we also had some, um, you know, questions that we wanted to go back and look at the, the statutes a little bit, um, and bring that back to discussion for the board in that discussion piece. Um, but that is all that we covered. Um, so then we go ahead and move to trustee comments. I'll, oh, go ahead, yes. Mr. Salt.
Thanks. Uh, first, I want to wish everyone a happy Constitution Day, um, September seventeenth. Uh, second, I wanted to give a quick update, uh, to the board here. Uh, I'm, me, Heather and Brantner met with, um, Mr. Sahin, uh, last week, I believe it was, uh, to walk around that property at Rockerman. Um, unfortunately, he said that it's not actually financially feasible for him to donate the space to us, as he had initially mentioned, and so he talked about some, uh, purchase or lease arrangements that might be available and was going to send that information over to Heather. I think we got some of that, I don't remember if we got everything, because we were also getting stuff from, uh, the Cheyenne renewal, and I don't remember what all came in and what didn't. Um, the amount that he brought to us from a purchase side was more than what he had talked to us about when we were in person. Uh, when we were in person, he mentioned, uh, possibly selling us, it's about a ten thousand square foot space. It's in I, one of the buildings that's over there. Um, next to the car wash, if you've been back that way. And he was quoting us two to two and a half, but negotiable. Uh, and then when we got the, the document, um, that he mailed over later, it was north of two point six, um, that he had put in that email. So, um, not something that we're, according to Brantner, there's going to be a complete gut, and so the amount of cost to, to redo that is going to be fairly substantial, especially when you're talking about the purchase of the building as well. So he's open to some other opportunities. Um, so all that to say, uh, not quite the, the silver bullet we were looking for, but, uh, we are in, in somewhat of a communication channel with him about what some options might be for that, that area.
Right, thank you. Um, I also want to add some comments, too. I wanted to, I noticed that the Foundation Board was able to attend this evening, so I wanted to extend thanks to all of them, um, for being here. I see, um, many of the executive officers. So glad to have you here, Neil, Nadine, um, and everyone else. Um, so grateful to see you, and just wanted to express as well our thanks for, uh, your generosity and helping with the purchase of Ruth Holly. We certainly could not have done that without you, and I appreciate your support for PPLD and being that fundraising arm that just helps us be able to take care of the district and take care of our community. So, um, deep gratitude to you, and thanks for coming. Alright, any other trustee comments about how we've engaged with the district or with the public on behalf of the district? Alright, then we will go ahead and move into the reports. Uh, the first one is Friends of the Pike's Peak Library District Report, Rita Jordan.
Thank you. Uh, so nothing to add to the report, but I just do want to, uh, point out that our fall big book sale is coming up. It will be the ninth, tenth, eleventh, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth of October, so it'll be before your next meeting. That's why I have to put a plug for it right now. Um, and once again, we just love seeing, we've seen so many of you that have come to the book sale, and it's just a wonderful opportunity to even take a look and see what goes on, because, um, I mean, people are lined outside the library an hour, two hours before the sale starts. So it's wonderful, actually, it's gratifying to see that people are still interested in real books, that they're, uh, this whole idea of literacy and building their libraries at home is wonderful, and the fact that we know that in a, in a few months, up to a year, we'll see those books back, because then they redonate them back and we just sell them again. Um, so once again, I'd invite, I'd like to invite all of you to at least drop by, uh, during those four days, and even if it's just to say hi, because the volunteers who work really do appreciate seeing the higher-ups, both from the Friends Board and from PPLD, the folks that they see. And they just really, you know, we, we like to show that they, we like to show them that we appreciate the time that they are giving to make that sale successful. Hopefully, we'll have another record-breaking sale. We've been on a roll with all of our sales, that we break the record. Um, so that's all I have, is looking forward to seeing you on the sale.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for Friends? Okay, we want to thank, extend our thanks to you two for all the wonderful support you provide to the library and expanding literacy in the county. So, thank you to Friends. Alright, um, now we'll go on to the Pike's Peak Library District Foundation Report, Courtney Van Cleef.
So Courtney's actually out right now, so I have a couple of things to share, and then I think Nadine was going to say a few words as well. Um, she wanted to make sure that I shared, um, that October twelfth, there's a donor appreciation event, um, at one thirty in Manitou. The board is invited, um, and invitations have gone out in the community, so really excited about all the work they're doing to put that together, um, and that the foundation is working on their twenty twenty-six budget. Um, so I'm sure that Courtney will share more about that once that's finalized on their end. And then if Nadine, did you want to share anything on Courtney's behalf?
I just, I just need to, I just need to make that happen. I'm sorry, I didn't know that. I didn't know that was happening, so I just need to give her the ability to it looks like somebody else maybe did.
Thanks, Jeremiah.
Great.
Yep, you're welcome. Alright.
Okay, can you hear me?
Sorry about that.
Okay, good. Um, sorry, yeah, it said that I couldn't unmute myself. So I wanted to say earlier, Julie, thank you so much for, um, for inviting us. Obviously, we're invited to every meeting, but to, um, to invite us specifically and through the kudos, and, and I listened into the last board meeting as well, and every vote you guys took, you mentioned the foundation and that it's meaningful and it really underscores the work that we've been doing over the last few years, uh, with a lot of staff changes, new board members, new policies and procedures, new engagement with the trustees as well as with staff. Uh, we've been taking on, and Courtney and Marcy, um, have led so much of that, just a tremendous amount of work, um, getting us back into a place of, of being a healthy, well-functioning board, so that we can continue to raise money for the district. Um, I hope that the, the contribution and distribution that we recently did is only the first of many. Um, and as we talk about locations like Rockerman and what have you, that the foundation can really be a vital part of fundraising for the district. Um, and that our patrons will see that, um, and that they'll come to our events. So we are planning, um, a night at the library, bringing back our gala next year, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-six, which coincides with National Library Week, and also right after National Library Giving Day. So we're hoping to capitalize on a lot of momentum and publicity that will be going on, not just from PPLD, but nationally. So you will hear all, um, a lot more about that as time goes on. Um, but honestly, we just, um, we're honored to do the work that we do, and we do it for our patrons, and we do it for you, and I just hope that we can raise more money to give you more money. So, thanks for your support, too. I know it's been a undertaking for us to kind of get reorganized, but I think that we're in a really good place, and we're continuing to add a few more board members. Um, and thanks, um, especially to Debbie and currently to Angela, previously to Scott, um, for being our trustee liaisons. They've done a great job, and it's really wonderful to have that back and forth, so. And if you didn't make it to Pickleball, it was amazing, and Courtney and Marcy did a great job at Pickleball, so. So my final plug, but April eighteenth, we'll send out more information.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Nadine. Any questions for Nadine or Heather on the foundation?
Not really a question, but I just wanted to state, uh, how much I appreciate the partnership. I mean, the four years or so that I've been on the board, I can say that this is the strongest the partnership has really been between the foundation and the district, and so really appreciate the work that, that you guys have done. I know Nadine, you and I've been kind of talking off and on for the last few years, and, um, really appreciate those open communication channels and, and the work that you guys are doing to support the, the mission of the district. So, um, the work you guys are doing is meaningful, and I can tell you from our side, uh, we feel the partnership, so really appreciate you guys.
Amazing, thank you so much. I see Dora's hand.
Uh, I understand.
Uh, you mentioned October twelfth, uh, donor appreciation at Manitou. Was there a time?
I think, uh, one to three PM, let me double check that. And Heather, you might know better than I do.
I have down one thirty, I think one o'clock might be some set up stuff, yeah.
One o'clock is for us.
One thirty for guests.
Correct, one thirty to three, yeah, or one thirty to three thirty, I believe, yes.
Uh, I echo what Erin said as well. Uh, I know that, uh, I too have been on the board, and this is strong, uh, representation, and we definitely appreciate everything that, uh, the foundation is doing, and I think, Nadine, yes, we did mention you at every vote, uh, the foundation of the work you've been doing to make things possible for the initiatives we want to, uh, get in place. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Well, and I certainly hope that, um, everyone that was attending that board meeting, you know, heard that some of that contribution came from the foundation, and that will hopefully help us as we do more outreach, we do our letter campaigns, we do our events, um, because the dollars we raise come right back to the district, um, for all the vital needs around, um, around our branches. Thank you all.
Alright, any more questions or comments? Alright, then we will go ahead and move to the next report, which is the financial report for August twenty twenty-five, Kim Hong.
Good evening, board. Can everybody hear me? Getting some thumbs up, great. So I just wanted to touch a point on a couple of items that are in the report, and then if you have any questions, please let me know. Um, property taxes, we have collected ninety percent, ninety-seven percent of the budget for the year, so you will start to see those numbers start to dwindle each month as we kind of get through the year. Um, the other note I wanted to mention is the donations. We did receive the one point two million from the foundation, so thank you for that, for the Ruth Holly and U-Pass purchases. Those were recorded in August, because we did receive the funds. Um, I wanted to go over three of the highest expenditures within the general fund. We have employee benefits and salaries. We're currently sitting at sixty-two percent of our budget. I do anticipate that to kind of increase a little bit, as we've had quite a bit of hiring happening within the district between, uh, the end of August and starting in September, so we're very excited to see some of those open positions filled. Um, the second one would be our Building in Vehicle Maintenance. We're at fifty-five percent of the budget for the year. I don't anticipate us going over that, but that's kind of where we're sitting at right now. And then, uh, the third one is the Collection Management Materials. We're sitting at the sixty-six percent of our budget. Again, remember that with the ILS change, um, some of those costs will not be coming in. You'll see more numbers, uh, more expenses being recorded in the next few months as they try to purchase ahead of time before that closes down. And then finally, I just wanted to touch base on the capital, because we are currently sitting at one point six million that we have spent of the seven million. And we have several projects that are currently encumbered, so those are not showing in the actuals. The two largest ones that I see is the East AMH System, which we were very excited to get that done. I believe I heard they are getting ready to install it, so within the next month or so, you should see another hundred ninety-seven thousand come off in the actual spend, and then the twenty-one C Water Main reroute was completed. We do have a a few things that they did need to do on top of that, so that, uh, expense has not been recorded yet. Any questions for me?
Kim, I had a question on this page, more on format than anything.
Absolutely.
I just want to question, the annual budget column is what was actually approved in the budget. Actual revenue is year-to-date, and the variance is the difference between what was budgeted in the year-to-date that like annual is not your, um, percentage of budget, right? That's total budget for the year?
Correct.
Okay, that's how I was reading. I just wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly.
No, great question.
Thank you.
Alright, any further questions on that report? Alright, then we will go ahead and move on to the Public Services Report, Tammy Sales, and I believe that includes the Summer Adventure Report.
Thanks, Julie. Um, before I get to the exciting news about Summer Adventure, I just want to remind you all again, the new ILS, the integrated, Integrated Library System is coming, and we are officially kicking off that announcement to the public tomorrow after tonight's board meeting. As a reminder, you know, the ILS system is pretty much the nerve s- system of everything that we do for the library district, so it includes purchasing books, placing books on the shelf, our library cards, pretty much everything we do that serves the public involves our ILS. purchasing books, placing books on the shelf, our library cards, pretty much everything we do that serves the public involves our ILS system. So the new system is coming. It's going to, um, in order to do the transition, it's going to cause a ten-day um, time period where we're not going to be able to purchase any new books. People won't be able to place holds on their items. But they will be able to come in and check out materials during that time as we transition from the old system to the new system. This is the first time we've had a new ILS system since two thousand and one. So it's definitely time to look at at making a change. But I think once we've done this change, that change, the patrons are really going to enjoy some of the new tools we're going to be able to offer with that, which includes the one that I am really looking forward to, which is when you're in the catalog and you're searching, you're going to find one record for the book and it will have a tab for each type of record that is. So there'll be a tab for an ebook, there'll be a tab for an audiobook, and there'll be a tab for a physical copy. So you won't have to scroll down to find the format that you wish to have. So that is coming. I see there's a hand up. So I'll stop with my announcement about the ILS to answer questions about that.
Thanks. So, uh, in that blackout period you were talking about, um, are digital materials still going to be available? I know you said people can come in, but they can't place holds. What about digital materials?
All the e-materials will be available. We'll still be able to purchase e-materials too, because that's an instant purchase and it goes right into the system. To try and offset some of the physical materials, we're going to make some dummy records to hopefully, once we come back up online, patrons will be able to place hold on some of like the new releases that'll be coming. But yes, you'll still have access to your e-materials.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions about the ILS system?
Erin, I have this big question. I wanted to make sure I had, I could access my books online.
Yes, you could definitely access your ebooks and you can still access the physical ones. You just can't put a hole. Yes.
To me and my Kindle man.
Yes, exactly. Exactly. So then the next big thing, oh, I'm sorry, Julie, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say I hadn't realized it had been twenty, twenty-four years since we last updated the technology. So uh, I think the patrons and, and staff will be thrilled with having a little bit more updated service there.
Yes, yes. And I think they'll really appreciate those new tools too. And some of those tools will be rolling out um, after, after the release, but, um, they, they will like the new tools that'll, that are coming with that. Um, and then in your report on page twenty is the actual summer adventure report. And so Melody and the programming team really did a nice job compiling all that information for you to read and review. Uh, I thought I would just touch on the highlights tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, so we did once again exceed the number of res- registers, um, registrants for the program. So we had almost nineteen thousand people register, which of course this year does include adults again. So that's an increase by about five hundred and twenty-nine people or a three percent increase over last year. And then the completion rate, we also had a, uh, increase in that as well. That increased by about four hundred and seventy individuals or a six percent, um, completion rate too. So, um, some of the things that I'm really proud of the team and what they were able to offer, you know, they do do a lot of extra programming dur- during summer adventure time. And so they offer two hundred and fifty-five summer adventure programs, um, which is in addition to their five hundred and eighty-nine standing programs that they do continue to offer too as well. So, um, and then finally, uh, the parties had huge attendance numbers this year. Uh, the Fountain Party recorded six hundred and twenty attendees at Fountain. Parking was quite, was at quite a premium there. Um, and then East as well had over thirty-five hundred participants too. So we had, we, we had numbers we haven't seen ever. So yes, even before the pandemic. So I'll take any questions about summer adventure too. Okay. Thank you all.
Right. Um, well, if there are no further questions on that, then are there any questions on I T strategy, innovation, communication? All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to the CEO Report channel. Shanice.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Good evening, board. So, um, I, first of all, I want to start with thanking, uh, Pike's Peak Library District Management Team. As you know, we never stop thinking about our budget. So when the Board of Trustees approved budget in December, then we start thinking about, uh, next year budget sometime in April. So, uh, and, uh, again, we're in a process of it. Uh, we received and, uh, that's how it works. Our managers submit their requests and needs. Then we review all of that. So what we received and when we looked at, uh, projected revenue that we might receive in twenty twenty-six, we were, uh, over or by two, two point five million dollars. And as I very clearly remember, one of the directives and goals that board has provided for me is always to deliver a balanced budget. So I want to thank my team, management team, leadership team for working very hard, making hard decisions, reducing some of the, uh, offerings to ensure that when we, uh, present the budget to the Board of Trustees in October, that will be balanced. And despite all of that, um, again, uh, we had a whole day. I think I shared with some of you. Uh, Kim and I had to sit in a meeting for about ten hours to be discussing the budget about for every, from every department and also asking, uh, the managers, directors, uh, chiefs to look and what they can reduce to ensure the balanced budget. So I want to thank, um, all of PPLD team for, for doing that. So. And, uh, again, we will be finalizing and we're presenting the budget to the board preliminary balanced budget in October. At this point, we also, thanks to Pike's Peak Library District Team, we managed and we are hoping, uh, to also, um, uh, make recommendations when it comes to cost of living increases, um, to, to, in, in that budget. So that's, um, if I'm honest with all of you, that's something that I'm rather relieved that we were able to do it because it's a long process. So, and next, uh, is also one of the goals that I received for a trustees is to uh, focus on data and not only collect data, but also analyze data that we have in our system. So, uh, Strategy and Innovation Department, uh, whose director is Becca Cruz. There are in my book saints because I give them a lot of projects, uh, and they somehow managed to deliver. And one of that infographics that you have in your board packet, actually, they, uh, analyzed our circulation, uh, and, uh, provided that report when it comes for physical collection popularity. Because we very often, oh, that's actually, sorry, I'm looking, I look at our circulation. What you see from that infographic that we, uh, looked at data and compared physical versus Libby orbit, right? And that's fascinating. It's fifty fifty. But also another part of it, that's what one of the goals that I have is not only collect data, but analyze and look at different branches. And when you, what you see from your, and I, I hope that everybody has access to that, that, um, percentage of total physical checkout by location. And as you see, again, at East Library and Library twenty-one C, quite high and also it's understandable, right? And then, um, High Prairie also is not very behind considering that it's not as of a big of location. Then, uh, if you look at percentage of total Libby overdrive, uh, checkout by locations as well. It's very similar, but then what you see when it comes to physical monument is kind of number three and then, uh, immaterial is Penrose Library. Uh, by when you look at the infographic. So then we also looked at district-wide top five collections. And honestly, I was surprised when I saw that that was nonfiction. Right? Different categories and then videos. So someone asked me that, oh, people still check out videos as you see from our data. They do. So. And then, um, uh, you see popularity collection by branch as well. So what it says when we collect this data and look at data and we see and we identify needs by our location. And then when we make decisions, we'll look at that and see, okay, so if you look at picture books, right? And also we understand their families. So this location checks out a lot of picture books and we look at popularity, we'll look at demographics. Again, it's, uh, we will be presenting on demographics very soon as well. We're looking on the whole county and seeing and also the location, how we can provide better services. Our next also is programming by location and, uh, again, Becca and her team, they're looking and analyzing as well. Do you have any questions about the infographic? That got included in your board packet?
I was just surprised that fiction was so far behind everything else.
Yes. Yeah. I was very surprised too. So I was like, wow, I did ask questions. So then Becca provided more detailed report to me explaining so how they, um, collected the data and analyzed.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, like, within the nonfiction category, I mean, that's really broad, right? So do we have more information about inside of the nonfiction category? Like what are, is it, you know, um, like educational materials? Is it biographies? Like what are, what are the types of things that people are?
Yes, it's biography is educational as well. And again, I, we do have that more detailed as well. But also if we look at that, we know that we have also Power Pass, right? With school districts. Also, I'm sure it impacts that as well. And we have a lot of, uh, resources for families, homeschool families as well. So, but yeah, biographies. And I believe I had another information that Erin, and now I have only one screen. It's hard for me to open different ones. But I, I will be very happy to email the detailed report to all of you who'd like to. But yes, they do analyze everything and provide that information. But yes.
No, I, thanks. I just, I was just surprised.
I, I think that all the infographics that you do, all those graphs, and, uh, even this report could be part of our accountability measures that we put in for our strategic planning. Because that does tell the story of how we are using the data to make decisions and, uh, and, and I think that's real important as we move forward, whether it be to have a ballot initiative or whatever. You know, we make decisions based on, uh, the data that we're collecting. And I think those are, that's definitely part of our accountability measures for the strategic plan. And one other comment that I want to make, I don't know, but it appeared to me when I looked at the data from H R, we are now almost all, we're, we've hired almost all the people that we want to have on, in place. Am I correct? It looked like the numbers were getting close to what they were before.
Yes, we're getting closer and closer. We never have everyone does we want. But yes, we're very, again, managers, um, they've been posting positions. It's, it's also a process. Very often, uh, it's hard for, uh, uh, people to understand that it just does not happen. Someone leaves, then you can post a position. So, and every time we have a vacant position, we also analyze that as well and see, okay, can we do uh, without this position? Because as you know, personnel is the most valuable, but most expensive asset that we have. And it's an ongoing cost. So when you hire someone, we want to make sure that it's sustainable and we will be able to retain these individuals and pay them salary benefits and, uh, do our best to include cost of living as well. So that's why every decision we make, including vacancy positions, we have those discussions to ensure that it's people's lives. So we take it very seriously, looking at our budget long term.
Hey, what's the timeframe for this data?
Uh, which one?
The, the top five collections?
I think it, it was here, uh, from, uh, January twenty twenty-four, June twenty twenty-five.
Okay. It's about an eighteen-month span.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions?
Good job.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we will go ahead then and move on to business items. Any, um, conversation or questions, comments on the? Okay, not that we will go ahead and move on to new business, starting, uh, but before we do that, we do have public comment pertaining to agenda items. Jeremiah, do we have any signups for those specific items?
No, no sign up specific to agenda items. So all five will be in the slot at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll go ahead to decision twenty-five dash nine dash two, Penrose Exterior Safety Improvements, Michael Brentner.
Good evening, board. Can everyone hear me? Wonderful. Jeremiah, do I have the ability to share my screen?
You should. And if there's a problem, I'll resolve it quickly, but you have the same privilege as Timothy did, so you should be good.
Zoom is so much different than Teams, so it always takes me a moment. All right, did that work?
Yeah, although it's in presenter mode, so if you go full screen, it'll be a little bit.
We good?
Uh, we can still see the like next slide, so it's not the full.
I'm not sure. This phone, uh, doesn't do it.
I think if you go back to the thing you had before, um, I think there's going to be a little toggle at the top of that to get you out of presenter view and just duplicate. I should have caught you before you closed out.
All right, I'll try one more thing. All right, I think that might have done it. No, didn't do it.
Go to that display settings at the top.
Yeah, I tried that.
Think and then duplicate. That didn't do it. There we go. You're good.
Did that work? All right, wonderful. Thank you for the assistance. All right. Did that work? Alright, wonderful. Thank you for the assistance, alright. So um thank you for your time tonight, and I appreciate you being patient when we tried to bring this up. All of these slides you did have in your board packets presented earlier. Um what we are here tonight to talk about is the Penrose Exterior Safety Improvements. This is phase three of the Penrose Safety Improvements that we've been working on for the last year and a half. This current phase encompasses multiple projects outside of Penrose, and we're going to walk through these here. Um we have put out an RFP for that, that did come back, it did close, we did evaluate, and our recommendation is enclosed in our presentation this evening. So um partners that we worked with as part of this um exterior. Safety Improvement Project down at Penrose, including um all the. Parts that you're going to see tonight were the Downtown Partnership of Colorado Springs. As a member of that and as a member of the downtown community, want to make sure that we are working very closely with all of our community partners downtown. Downtown Review and Development Board, which provided the approval for this. Um which you'll see here in a moment. City of Colorado Springs Urban Planning Division, Colorado Springs Police Department giving us recommendations. And our consultant and architect on this was N E S. So way back in January, we were able to get approval from the um. Downtown Planning and Community Development. Um it was a long process to get here, we were really excited when we did, but then there was a long process from. January to tonight, when we are presenting you our, our final plan and our RFP for this project. What you see here is an overview of the entire project. I'll be going through many of the, the areas of this, but I'm happy to speak about any of them um in more detail at the end, if you have any additional specific questions. As you can see here, the downtown Penrose Campus covers four um full parcels of the downtown area. Um it's a very large campus uh. We do a lot of work on it daily, so we're going to jump in and look at each of these parcels individually. And what the proposed improvements were on this RFP and what will be addressed. So this is the north side um over by Kiowa. Facing, uh there's a large church over there, a bank on that corner. I don't, everyone can, I'm assuming everyone can see my, my pointer is that, yes, Jeremiah, excellent, that's gonna make this so much easier. So. This stretch of um grassy area here, uh the sidewalk is this location here, so you can see that the fences is set back. From that sidewalk approximately eight feet along this entire stretch. Um a fence would be installed along here incorporated into our Carnegie Building. Which you see um here at the very top of your screen. Down here, this is. The children's area, if you're familiar with the Penrose Campus, there's an emergency exit located here, and there are doors here that come out of our children's area. The sidewalk currently stops right here. So we would be expanding the sidewalk um from that location all the way out to the existing sidewalk. And then installing a pedestrian gate here, so that we can make sure we have good emergency egress from that entire section of the building. Um the area here is approximately. Five feet from the building, so we have offsets, we would be able to get lawn maintenance equipment over into this area as well. And then if you're familiar with the Kiowa side, there's an art sculpture and an old fountain in this area. Now, the fountain doesn't run anymore. Um because of many years ago, we had um water issues in the city, I'm sure everyone can remember our droughts. As part of that, the library district stopped running this exterior fountain, but it is still an art installation. And there's ripples that um circulate out from this interior art installation. And that is part of the art project. So part of this with N E S was determining a way that we could install fencing along this section to create a courtyard. In our children's area while still respecting this um structure. So. This area here with the fence, you can see again, set back approximately eight feet from the sidewalk, has a small undulating retaining wall. That mirrors that um artistic ripple of the fountain to make sure that that doesn't degrade over time. And then the fence connects into our Penrose Campus right here. Moving on to the next section. This is the very front of the building, so if you're familiar with Penrose, this is our main courtyard, and this is our parking lot. And this is the sidewalk along Cascade Street. Now. There's a lot that's incorporated in the safety improvements in this section of the building that aren't just um installation of our fence component in this area. So there is currently existing a planter in um this area here. And here, we would need to be removing those planters. Those planters were abandoned quite some time ago. Um we find all sorts of things buried in those, they are, are a little unsightly. But having those planters exist here in relation to the fence just provides an ability to jump. Right over that fence, so we would be removing those. One of the main improvements in the front area here is, as you drive in through our um main. Parking pole up here, you've probably noticed that our, our handicap spots. Project significantly out into the roadway, and this creates a really large safety issue. We've had lots of accidents associated with there. It's a little difficult for individuals who are utilizing these handicap spaces to access them. Um as you can see here, these handicap um shadows. Uh show where the existing spaces extend all the way out into the drive. And so we would be tearing out this concrete sidewalk section here. Removing this landscaping section here and reporing the concrete sidewalk here. So we can pull these handicap spaces all the way in and remove that safety issue for our, for our patrons out front. Getting them completely out of the driveway. Here in the front, we would be. I'm adding fencing in this section here with a pedestrian gate and fencing in this section. Now this would be a gate that would slide to the side. Uh when those areas are closed. This area in the front is getting a um small gate right here. On the main sidewalk or fencing in the main sidewalk area here, and then a gate here, and then this gate rolls back behind these two sections. So it's hidden during the day and make sure that the courtyard is as open as possible. And you may have noticed, if you've driven past Penrose in the last week or so, that this half quartz wall that we see represented here. Has had the new component of the Penrose sign installed on it, and that's a. An extension of that wall that goes up that matches the downtown partnerships um gateway signs into the downtown corridor. So we're tying the entrance into our facility into a more cohesive downtown environment. And then um next week, there's going to be a lit sign that's going to be installed right here. To help hide that gate as it rolls back and to really pop up the, the entrance to Penrose there. So we're really excited about getting that installation done. And then the, the bike racks that are located out here that are in the way would be moved over here to the front of the building. So they're a little bit more secure and where patrons can keep a better eye on their, on their bicycles when they're utilizing our campus.
Hey, Michael?
Yes.
Can I ask a question before you move on?
Please.
Okay, that, that last slide, if I'm, if I'm following this diagram properly. The two handicap spaces that you've got there um that are kind of right next to each other. Um and then the, the, the lines on both the. I'm looking at it like the left side and the, and the right side, or the top and the bottom side. I'm assuming those are van accessible?
Correct, so there's, there's additional spacing that's left on these, so that no one parks directly next to those vehicles, so they're able to. Their van accessible, that some of them have lifts, some of them are manual, but the ability to load and unload a chair or any other um needed apparatus. Out of those areas without being parked in.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that uh we weren't. Getting rid of any of that, and, and then the, 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 the bottom one, the furthest bottom one there. Yeah, that area right there. That's not a, a, a van accessible one, is it?
No, currently this, this, it's, it's hard to see in the shadow, but this is a park or a sidewalk right here.
Okay, okay.
This is sidewalk, and we would be removing that and striping it, so that no one can park there because the gate would roll back behind here. And then we would be installing a pedestrian gate here to access this area.
Okay, thank you for going through that, I, I couldn't tell specifically what that was.
Yeah, the, the, it's, it's been quite a journey to get to here, and then the, we, we left in all the shadow details to make sure we could see what's existing.
Right, okay, thanks.
Yeah, so this uh is our lower parking lot area. And most of the components here, the boundary with our um Pike's Peak State College runs across here to give you an idea. And then, of course, you see West Pike's Peak Avenue here um to the left of the screen. So the changes that will be done here, this walkway here is an emergency exit from our computer lab inside the lower level of Penrose. So we would be installing a pedestrian gate here, and then from that pedestrian gate extending a small, short fence section across here. This gate, this gate, and this gate would all be identical. Um this is kind of a portcullis area, we call it the little castle area, if you've driven into the lower parking area. We would just be installing gates with bollards in these areas. Um you can see this one is um switched around from the other because there's a significant slope there um on this last entrance. We would be striping out and removing this single parking space here on the end. To provide better access for the fire department, they requested we do that when we make these changes, so they can make this turn. Out of the parking lot a little easier when they're exiting. So we would be striping this off, and then in this area above it, since this would be a no parking area, we would be creating in handicap accessible ramp. Right here in this striped area and a gate in this fence, so any individuals who would be um. Parking to go to the college area or the dog park or anything over in that area, if they're utilizing our paid parking. Would be able to utilize this gate and not have to walk out, which they currently do. The driveways that um our, our vehicles are coming into the, the parking lot on. This section right here shows some elevations.
Hey, hey, Michael, I'm sorry, I can't get off, I can't get off mute quick enough. Um I'm assuming that the, the college. Saw these plans as well, or we reviewed them with them to let them know that we were putting a fence up, or that the proposed plan was.
Actually, a request from their side, they have a significant amount of individuals that park in our lots and utilize um the, the college campus again. They provide parking in the, I believe in the antlers garage, I don't know what their agreement is there, but. A, a good number of their students of, of park in this area, and as there's no fence there now, they just walk across and there's not a safety issue, but we wanted to make sure that. Any individuals using the lot have a safe exit out of it and not walking through a, a driveway.
Okay, great, thanks.
So these are some elevations on the um different fencing types, so there would be two different types of fencing um elements included in this, and we'll show you some. Some artist renditions of those here shortly. The uh wrought iron style, which you see depicted here. And then the cross hash basket style, which you see depicted here. Pardon me. Those two different um fence styles were selected in purposely, the wrought iron style. Reflects what we have existing on the campus right now. There's a large fence section blocking off our Carnegie Garden. On our Kiowa side that is historic, and we wanted to make sure that we matched that as closely as we could. And really incorporated the whole downtown campus into one unit, and so we reflected that with the elevations here. And then this is what's known as um invisible fence. They call it invisible fence because they intentionally install it in areas where they want to. Have it not look as much of like a fence as some other things. They have installed this around the Great Pyramids, they've installed this in Washington D. of many of the monuments. Here in Colorado Springs, the best example I can point you to is our Switchback Stadium. So this is fence that um is much easier for your eye to see through and looks, looks much less like fence. The only place that we would be utilizing this fence right here is at the very front courtyard. Of the facility where when it is closed at night, we want to make sure that it's still looks as open as possible, and then during the day, those would be rolled back behind the wall. You can see depiction of here of how there's a very short fence section installed. This would be on the cascade side, where again, that, that half quartz rock wall is, so we've been installing a very short run of. Half fencing on top of that. Now, this plans do stay eight foot, but that is not corrected, that's actually only seven foot. Um so this gives you a little bit of the idea of the undulations at the water fountain there that we talked about, and the wall that would be built. To um mirror those, to make sure that we can protect that art installation. And this is the landscaping that would be installed, so landscaping would be installed between the fence, the eight foot setback and the public sidewalk. We want to make sure that we're blending those fence lines out as much as possible, also creating um. A, a pleasant environment next to the public sidewalk for everyone downtown who's walking to enjoy. And so these have all been picked out and plotted in here as well. This is just a little bit more in um intimate detail on the plant species, I'm gonna skip that, but you have in your packets, if you're really a herbologist. Um these are some artist renditions of the fencing from the front. Um and the side in both day and night, there's, there's a real wow factor there for you, we wanted to present. So you can see the um wrought iron fencing here, again, looks very similar to what we currently have on the Carnegie. And then if you're looking at the front, you can see these hashtag panels here that look like what is at the switchbacks area. Um this small section right here of this wall extension has completed installation. And then it's this small section here that you can see lit up in this slide. This is the last section, and that's going to be installed next week and given power, so please drive by Penrose and see the beautiful new sign out front drawing attention to our location. And then you can see it here, open during the day, the intent is to make sure that the courtyard stays as open as possible, and these panels can be hidden. Um this gate is completely pulled open, and we want to make that courtyard as open as possible. Here's a little bit of our timeline, our RFP for this whole project was released on June ninth. Posted on the PPLD website as well as in the Gazette, which we do with all of our RFPs here at the district. We did hold our mandatory site walk. Um we did receive a bunch of questions back from that site walk. Um our final deadline for that was the twenty seventh, we returned all questions to all bidders on the thirtieth. We received everything by the twentieth. We did speak with Internal Affairs. Um on September second, and then we are here tonight on the seventeenth to present this to you for a decision. A little bit about the. Oh, did someone have a?
Oh, no, go ahead, I didn't realize you were continuing, go ahead and continue.
Alright, a little bit about the um RP. That was selected, that the contractor brought forth, they proposed a completion window of thirty to sixty days. Now, I believe that with the lateness of the season, that would be everything except for landscaping, I believe that. Um the intent is to have our sprinklers and irrigations completed with that as well, but they would be blown out at the time, which will make it slightly easier. But we will not be planting anything is my um assumption at this moment. Based on when we would start until next spring, because we want to make sure that those really would take. Again, it's been growing with the award of the project, um ordering of materials, and then any weather that would a- affect the project as well.
Michael?
Yes.
On, before you complete that, I, before I lose my question, the doors in the, on the side on. Um well, what street is that? That is not Pike's Peak, is it? Well, it's on the side, like uh when you go across to the antlers. Parking lot.
On West Pike's Peak?
Is that Pike's Peak? I didn't know where there was.
Yeah, it's West Pike's Peak.
Are those doors, they'll be open during the day? And are they?
The, you mean the gates into the parking lot?
Yeah, the.
Yeah, of course, yeah, so. So the, the intent of the fence um that we're proposing as part of these safety improvements is here. Is to protect the library's facility and all the equipment inside when staff are not there. So we wanted to make sure when staff were there, it could be opened and, and welcoming as much as possible. And then the investment that taxpayers have in a large facility downtown is protected when there are no staff there, there are no security there, there is no one. To protect the building in the evening from vandalism, from theft, from break-ins, from any number of things that the campus experiences that we periodically are repairing and cleaning. In the downtown area.
Okay, just, I just couldn't.
So those will be open prior to opening every day, and then they would be closed every evening.
Okay, sounds good.
Absolutely. Um we asked the data to provide three references from past large scale um installations. We did reach out to all of those, and they were all highly positive. We were actually blown away from the amount of positive reviews that we received from them. And then we did a little bit more additional research and reached out to um projects that they had worked on, that they did not provide us as references. And received glowing reviews from those um references as well. This is the specific bid that we received with uh references here, you can see the three that they provided were um School District eleven. Lewis Palmer School District and the Springs Rescue Mission. Again, the, the most common feedback that we got, um checking these references was. They did an amazing job from start to finish, and we will never use anyone else. So we were, we were very pleased to hear that. So existing funded on our capital project for this is two hundred and sixty two thousand four hundred ninety two dollars and fifty cents, that's, it currently exists. In our um twenty twenty five budget was approved last year for this um capital project. Um and with sign fabrication and installation costs thirty three thousand two hundred nineteen dollars and sixty five cents, again, that's what we're going to be concluding next week. The bid amount that was um presented. For the entire project, again, we wanted to do this as a consolidated project instead of eighteen broken up smaller projects, it's two hundred nineteen thousand dollars. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Hello? I think my screen just died, am I still here?
We can hear you.
You are here, Michael.
My screens just went black, but I am, I am still here, I'm gonna work on that, um while I answer any questions for you.
Um okay, so I'll start. So we're looking at page forty seven of the packet. That's what we're going to be voting on, um or are we voting on page? Um, or are we voting on page forty nine? Typically, when we see an RFP request, you know, in the past, it's been a single document that has, these are the uh. Companies that responded to the RFPs, these were their costs. This, there were, you know. Positives and negatives of each one and then. The recommendation from the committee, um and am I missing that here or?
Yeah, so interestingly, um we we do usually provide all of those that were there, interestingly, we had multiple um. Companies come and walk through our bidding process and look through the project, but we only had the single individual. Company actually complete the bidding process. So our our um decision at that point in time was after we did all of our our background evaluated the bid to make sure that was competitive. Looked at the environment that it was presented in and did their references, it was, do we move forward with this individual bid, are we comfortable with that? Or do we reach it back out and um our grading of the project and looking at the bid, we were comfortable in bringing it to you for decision.
One more, one more, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Julie, um. You had said earlier that the landscaping was not included in that cost figure, correct?
No, the the landscaping is included. From start to finish, but the thirty to sixty day timeline that the bidder has provided for us. I do not believe will encompass the landscaping, they would have to come back in the spring and do those. They could put them in, but I do not believe I will let them because it will not survive and will be.
Okay, January is like prime planting season, isn't it?
You know, if you're out there with your gardening gloves, good on you.
Okay, I think I think that's all I had, Julie, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, any additional questions, board members? I appreciate the detailed breakdown, Michael, of all of that.
Of course.
Right. I'll go ahead then and ask for someone to read the motion and second it and then we can have any further discussion.
I move that the Pike's Peak Collaborate District Board of Trustees approve the Penrose exterior safety improvements as presented.
Second.
Great, is there any discussion from the trustees on the motion?
I I was gonna say, I appreciate all the work you guys have done, I know Penrose has been a big um. Concern over the last few years from a safety perspective and so I know. Taking this and doing a holistic safety plan. Uh, both internal and external is something that's been much needed and I'm really excited that we're able to move forward and kind of. Get the rest of these safety improvements done.
Great. Ms. Benz, Mr. Taylor, anyone else?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I got one more question, um. I want to make sure I I'm I'm reading this correctly, because I guess like I said, this is a different form that what we're. Used to seeing, but uh. So work will start this month and they're planning on re. Completing all of it by, I'm assuming the end of next month excluding all of the landscaping, correct?
Correct, that is what's proposed, but we did put the caveats in there, it's dependent on whether it's dependent on receiving of materials once the award is given to them. And it's um. Going to be affected by availability of materials with current tariffs as well, so but the intent would be that they would start, I I. I hesitate to say that it would be this month at this point, but they would. I mean, they can certainly get over there and start doing some of the demolition once everything is done and then installation after that, but it would be um. Starting no later than October.
Okay, and then have we made uh? Do we have plans, I'll say it this way, do we have plans to obviously put out signs and notifications to those that actually visit? Penrose Library on a regular basis and?
Yes, so there's. Disruption in this, including um but not limited to some disruption of the uh roadways around Penrose as well. And that is all included in the process with the with the bidder to do all the. Associated permits as well, not just the permits for the improvement, but the road closure improvement permits. And the associated flaggers that we're gonna have to have for that um is all associated within the bid as well. And then um PPLD would be responsible for um sending out those notifications of, you know, this section of the um campus is gonna be closed for this period of time. And then signs rerouting patrons to make sure that they are easily accessible or accessible to the library.
Great, I could, I figured you would do something like that, Mike, this isn't. Okay, appreciate it, thanks.
It's always good to ask.
All right, Ms. Gonzalez, Mr. again, anyone else have comments they want to add? Okay, then I'll go ahead and call for the vote on um the motion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Sorry, I was on mute.
Can you hear me, aye?
Yes, thank you. All right, the ayes, uh oh, sorry, um let me, anyone post signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the uh uh the. Motion carries and we'll move on to decision twenty five dash nine dash three. I muted myself. Um, again, Michael Brantner on decision twenty five dash nine dash.
Well, hello, board, it's nice to see you. I appreciate your time this evening. I am here to speak about the work that we have been doing with the Colorado Energy Office and the proposal to move forward. In a partnership on that work. Let me see if I figure this out, Jeremiah, if I can make it work this time, first try. I don't have high hopes.
I believe in you, buddy.
Did it work?
No, but I believe in you.
You keep believing. Keep faith alive. Come on, work. Yes?
Nothing yet.
Don't you swap it?
There's, it's not even shit, nothing shared at all.
Is my sharing turned off?
Awesome, it's coming up.
All right, look at that. Okay. So, um. I'm gonna walk you through this process and again, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me as we go. Uh, there's a lot included in this one as well. So, um, our state of Colorado contract is Charlie Stevens and he's a program engineer. For the state, we hoped that he was gonna be available this evening, but he had another engagement come up. And so any questions that come out of this that I am unable to answer for you, board, I'm happy to present. Uh, to Charlie and get back to you at a later time if you have a concern moving forward. But he said I'm so good at this anyway that he didn't need to be here, actual words, I'm not bragging. All right, so overview. Um, the so CPES, the Colorado Energy Office was a program that was set up um some time ago to assist. Um, organizations within the state in streamlining their energy efficiency, saving energy across the state, saving money. And reducing um carbon footprint and all all in all areas of energy management. And making sure that we're being good stewards. It provides um financing for those energy improvements. Owners can select financing for this and uh do up to a hundred percent of the improvement um for those energy improvements within the program. So things that are eligible for this program with the state are weatherization, transportation fuel technology, building decarbonation, which is where you're doing your energy efficiency. Um, policy and regulatory affairs, which we do have some policy improvements that we have. Uh looming above our heads with some new Colorado legislate legislation that has been inactive and then strategic initiatives. So. Water conservation projects are also included in here, any resilience measures, so basically what the the state is telling us is that. Anything you are going to do with your building that is going to improve how you are utilizing energy, saving energy, saving water. Um, and impacting your decarbonization, um they will assist you within this program on. Here's the uh. Here's the the nuts and bolts of this of this exact program. And this is a bit difficult to understand, so I'm gonna walk through this slowly and please, if you have any questions on this process, let me know. But we'll see how well I do on this. So. The project is funded with your own savings and so um a. Survey of your facilities takes place and they say you have um. Old infrastructure, you have non um resilient environmental in installations, you have um. Non-efficient um heating and air conditioning, water boilers and anything that's associated with our energy usage across any of our. Buildings that are commercial within our district. And they say if you were to replace that, and so we're gonna use easy math and we're say, it's gonna cost you one hundred thousand dollars to replace. All of the identified equipment to bring you in not only in compliance with the state laws that have been enacted, but to lower your energy costs just for decarbonization across. Across the district and and energy savings, if you install that one hundred thousand dollars of savings. Or well of equipment, you will save ten thousand dollars a year off of your energy bills. And so that's the survey that's um conducted across all of our. Uh, facilities, that ten thousand dollars of a year is our identified savings and so the program says, okay, that's gonna cost you. Ten years of savings to pay for that hundred thousand dollars and so you get financing. For that hundred thousand dollars to do the project upfront and then you continue to pay the exact same energy costs that you're paying right now. Even though your energy usage is saving ten thousand dollars a year and at the end of that ten years, it pays off your your. Project with the savings that you have made from that project, so it's a financing component that's been um created by the state to allow. Organizations like ourselves. To do these massive cost prohibitive installations on the front end and then use our savings over the course of the period of. Um, the project to pay back the cost of that installation, does that make sense? Hearing no, I don't know.
Sorry, I I could get off mute quick enough on this, um, okay, so.
Give a longer pause for you, Scott.
Appreciate that, um. So. If I understand this correctly, we would pay and using your example of a hundred thousand dollars, we would pay the hundred thousand dollars upfront. Oh wait, no, I'm sorry, so we would. We would pay ten thousand dollars a year for ten years in order to pay off the hundred thousand dollars it would cost. To fix.
In basic, in the most basic, simple understanding of it, yes, now there's there's more nuances to it, of course. But to keep it as simple as possible, the savings that are realized as part of the of the survey is what is utilized. For the payment, so your payments cannot be more than you would save over the period of time and so you would continue to pay if our. If our um energy bill was, you know, reduced by that ten thousand dollars, we would still pay our original amount in our budgeting. But that ten thousand dollars would be set aside to pay back for the program.
Okay, uh I I'm I'm hoping you'll get to the small print.
I will.
On this, okay, all right.
We're gonna start, we're gonna start up here. You can grow me and again, the things that I'm unable to um. Speak as sufficiently as as necessary, we can always go out for. So this is the how the project um contracting process works, so that was the overall. View, so now we're gonna look at the actual process, so the initial engagement we've already done, we've reached out, we've had conversations with the Colorado Energy Office and we said, hey. This is a program that we would love to look into, we have an enormous amount of infrastructure that is um. Aged out where we can no longer repair, is no longer sufficient, is um. Not not doing what it needs to be doing for us across all of our facilities. Hey, so we would do either um uh a memorandum of understanding with the state. Saying, yes, we're willing to work with you on this, this is our responsibility, this is your responsibility. Um, and then which we have done, you know, for the initial part of this process and then we come to where we are now. Where we are asking, we would like to go through the process of the evaluation of our facilities. To see what our savings would be, what could we replace, what would our savings be, what of the large ticket items we've already identified? That we need to do in our deferred maintenance, could we roll into this program and not have to pay out of the um. Library District's capital improvement plans or any of our savings or operating as moving forward, what can we capture? And place into this program to allow us more flexibility on some of our other deferred maintenance. And that can be done either through an RFP. Um, which we would put out for those um consulting companies to come and look through all of our buildings. Or it can be done through a sole source selection, so uh if you're familiar with government purchasing contracts with the district has used many times. The state of Colorado has done that within this program, so again, they're trying to make this as easy as possible for organizations of all sizes, whether the larger than us or smaller than us. To have a very convenient use of this um. This program and so they have put out an RFP for all of these consulting agencies and said you must meet these financial guidelines, you must um. It's basically an RFP at the state level of what we would do on our level, in fact, we've looked at their RFP process and it's more strict than ours is. And they have received all responses from that and they say, these are the vendors that are approved. Through our RFP process that met all of our financial guidelines, so we could select one of those and do a sole source. Um, through that government um contracting platform. After that's done, they do the investment grade audit, they go into every one of our buildings, they go through menu through all of our systems, all of our HVAC systems, our boiler systems, our windows, all of our. Cooling, everything that we have across the district that has to do with our energy usage, including our lighting. Um, anything outside we have for irrigation, all of our water usage. And they say what needs to be improved, what's broken down, what's inefficient, what can be repaired? At the end of that audit, they bring it to us and they say, here's what we recommend you replace, install or improve. If you replace, install and improve these items, this is the cost. If you install, replace and improve these items, this is our estimated energy savings for you over the next period of time. Does installing all of those cover and make sense? Does it cover the cost that it would be to install them, if it doesn't, then you you take items off until it does or you decide not to do the project. At that point, you implement and within this project. Um, one of the things that I love so much about it with my small facilities team is that they do all of the project management and overall um oversight of all of those projects. And so if we identify a million dollars worth of work that needs to be done on our on our boilers and our chillers and our HVAC systems. They identify the contractors, they bring them in, they do the project oversight, we are there as the customer to make sure they're installing and to the standards that we're requesting. And they're meeting the needs that were outlined in the scope. And then at the end of that, um, there's a measurement and verification, so they can't just walk away as part of this project. For the next three years, they have to come in and do a measurement and verification process on all of those facilities and say. Are you actually receiving the savings that we estimated that you would? Um, to remain part of that program so that you can, over that course of time, pay off those installation projects. I'm gonna say any questions and I'm gonna leave time for Scott.
Okay, so uh, thanks, Michael, um. I am aware of the lighting. Um, request. Um, are there other? Um, items that are being required? That we as a government entity are responsible for replacing in a specific amount of time?
So not as a government entity, but as a commercial facility in the state of Colorado, yes, so. Oh, we're getting, we're getting into the fun stuff now.
Yeah.
So um, we are aware, um, just the 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 lowest hanging fruit of 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 this energy project is our lighting conversion.
Correct.
No longer purchase the incandescent bulbs in the state of Colorado and we have to convert all of our facilities and all of our lighting over to our LED. That is a significant investment that is crippling to my budget to do across the district. But at the same time, that is the lowest hanging fruit that provides the greatest amount of savings, so switching over to those LED platforms. Is is a huge amount of of initial savings um on our our utility bills that are our district over the years, so that. That's a, that's a big one, another one as a commercial facility within the state of Colorado is, we have. And I I don't have um. Those in front of me, but I'm happy to send them over to you, we have a mandate from the state by the year of twenty thirty to reduce our energy usage um. At our facilities by X amount, um and we are. Leaps and bounds beyond where we where we need to be, we. leaps and bounds beyond where we where we need to be. We have, we we need to do a a several large projects, and most of it is because we have archaic systems that we can't support anymore. We patched together. We, you know, we we do the best we can with Penrose this week has had a considerable amount of those issues we've been working on repairing. But they are not efficient by any um ways that could possibly be measured. We are required to reduce those by twenty thirty. Now, um every year, we have to file with the state, and we just did this several months ago, what our current energy usage is at our large facilities. Um, we are exempt from um a yearly downtick of those, so every year, other commercial buildings have to show that they're yearly going down and improving those. We're exempt from the yearly mandate, but we are required to, by that deadline, um make our goals. And that's over um all energy usage within those facilities. Now, it doesn't affect our smaller facilities, it's just our large three commercials at this point in time. But I could see in the future where they would add additional legislation of that for smaller square footage um facilities.
So the boiler that we replaced, uh was that Penrose or was that um?
The boiler that was replaced was a twenty one C, and that was a.
Twenty one C. And that specific boiler that we replaced, is it a more efficient boiler than what we had there originally, or?
It is a more and almost anything would be a more efficient boiler than.
Oh, I agree.
Originally. So yes, I can confidently say it it is a more efficient boiler than what we had there. Um, whether a more efficient heating system would be recommended, I cannot say. Um, I'm not the the expert in that specific field, I'm the generalist that can do all of them, but um we would definitely have those conversations. My assumption would be that that would be well within the energy requirement guidelines that we would have, and that wouldn't be one of the projects.
Okay.
Um, but there's there's all sorts of different avenues that they they can recommend to to reach those savings levels.
Okay. Alright. And I'll let I'll let somebody else ask questions.
Michael, you made a comment that right now the state is requiring it of the large libraries, which would be be our big three.
Yeah, it's it's it's, I believe the cutoff is a hundred thousand square feet at this point in time. Um, I I may be off on that a little bit, but that's what my recommendation is at the moment. And we only have three facilities that that land within over a hundred thousand square feet, and it's our three flagships, of course. Um, but I can see in the future as as they continue to go on and making sure that the the state is using energy as efficiently as possible and water as efficiently as possible, that they would start to um make some of those requirements of below hundred thousand. I I haven't heard that they are, but I I could see that that it would be an avenue they would take in the future.
So my question is, would you, when you say the detailed assessment, would they be doing all an assessment of all the buildings or just?
No, so that that's a great question. Um, a lot of our smaller facilities are residential units. Um, so when we think about our our very small facilities, um Callahan, Palmer Lake, uh U-Pass, uh we don't have really any AHUs, although those are all commer- or residential systems, residential hot water heaters, residential HVAC systems. Um, so there's not much we can do in those areas other than lighting. We would certainly be assessing those buildings for our lighting conversion. Um, but most of those, we wouldn't really be taking huge looks at. There might be some window savings we could do there, and if it's feasible to replace some single panes with some double panes to get some of that energy savings, we could, we'll certainly be looking at that, but none of the extensive ones. Now, our buildings that have roof mounted AHUs and um definitely all of our boilers, all of our chiller pits, all of our um chilling towers, all of that is is absolutely gonna be within the scope of the survey.
And the other question I have is, how does this fall in with our um the audit we did on all our buildings? How?
That's that's gonna reduce our um timeframe quite a bit, because a lot of this has already been identified. So we, and that's that's the, those are the, again, the ones that we're gonna specifically focus on, because we'd like to say, well, we know we need to replace this, because it's in the FMP. We know that we need to fix that, because it's in the FMP. How many of those energy savings, and if you if you've extensively looked within the FMP, there's a a section of it, that's the energy audit. And the energy audit is what we would be focusing on, not the other repairs that need to be done, but what are the energy sinks across the district that are inefficient, that we've already identified need to be replaced? And then focusing on those, so it it actually gives us a significant foot up in the um surveying process that we've already done that. But we would be looking at all of the buildings as well from a um. So the FMP looked at what was deferred and what needed to be repaired. But there are improvements that could be made as well to save more energy, such as double pane windows, such as um heat things, things like that, where they weren't identified, but they could significantly increase our energy savings.
So we're not uh when they look at this, and I I'm sure you've already done some type of an assessment just by your conversation here. So when you look at this assessment from the facilities master plan, you're gonna take some of that, and they will do an additional, whoever this company is or whatever, whoever we select, whatever. They come in and they do an uh additional assessments, including your assessments, or are they?
Certainly, yeah, that they would be looking at that to start with. Um, so they have a really good roadmap of what to what to look at, we've already identified. And then we'll be looking at what else could we roll into that that would be um improving our energy usage.
And and I heard you correctly, that we would continue paying our our utility bill, whatever, as it has always been, with the assumption that we're gonna save ten thousand dollars a year. And that would just go into our coffers for when that time came to pay off that loan.
Well, not not exactly. That was that was a generalization of an example. So we would pay our utility bill as it comes. So if our utility bill reduced by ten thousand dollars, we would pay our reduced utility bill. But in our budget, we would have that normal amount that we are are currently paying set aside in the budget as a payment towards the repaying of this plan. So we wouldn't continue to pay our utility bill. And the ten thousand dollars was a simple old math example.
No, yeah, but that's that's how I kinda kept it in my, okay, that that makes sense, okay.
Alright.
Hey. I'm sorry. Got a couple of questions. Uh, one is the update, I'm assuming we have one, but upgrading the BAS would that, is that within the scope of this, or?
Yes, it is. So the BAS upgrade is on the FMP. And that's, again, really low hanging fruit. We we already have capital set aside to do the building automation system improvement. And so that would be one of the ones we would specifically look at, if we could capture this within this, which it certainly falls within the guidelines of the program, we would be able to free up that capital for other deferred maintenance. So any capital account that is specifically set for an energy project in the twenty twenty five budget, we've specifically not utilized yet, with the hope that we would be able to roll it into this. Um, and then the board be able to utilize those funds on something else.
Sure, I just wasn't sure if that would be in the scope of this, or if it was more of the direct, um, okay. Uh, and then um you may get to this, so if you're gonna get to this later, that's fine, but um looking at numbers, kinda Scott, I'm a what if kind of person. So just for argument's sake, let's say we're currently paying eighty thousand a year in utility cost. They come and identify this and say it's gonna be ten thousand a year in savings, so uh for the hundred thousand dollar project, so to kinda to your example, we're looking at spending uh repaying that loan, ten thousand dollars a year for ten years. So my question is, what happens if we don't realize that ten thousand dollar savings that they identified, and we're instead of the eighty thousand dollars, we go down to seventy five thousand, we're only seeing a five thousand dollar uh, you know, reduction versus the ten thousand. Also, what happens if we see more? Whatever happens, it's just goes gangbusters. And so we end up only at sixty thousand dollars a year in utility costs instead of the eighty thousand.
Great questions. So let me break those down. Um, if so if we do the assessment and they say that um these savings would not validate the investment in the equipment, then we would not do it. If we do the project and they say that the savings are a certain amount, and then they come back for their three years of auditing and we're not reaching those levels, then it falls within, if the difference falls upon the um the installers, because they have to prove that ahead of time, and they're responsible for that. So that's why there's so much time involved ahead of time, saying, yes, this will meet that, and this will. And my assumption is there's probably significant buffers built on on their side to make sure that that is the case. But um we we did ask about that with the energy office, and they said that that has not occurred over the the thirty years of the projects being done. And then if there's additional savings, that's just, so it's, we have a set payment. And so it doesn't fluctuate, and they say, well, if you you've saved this much, you pay this. If you don't, you pay that. There's a set payment. This is your payment every every month or quarterly, whatever it is, this is what you pay. So if we save more than that, great, there's there's less money that we spend on the utilities.
Okay, I wasn't sure if we would owe the savings for those ten years, or if it's just that fixed dollar amount.
It's just a fixed payment, and they say, this is what it's gonna cost to install. This is spread out over, you can do it up to twenty years. So say it was, this is spread out up to twenty years, this is what your payment is, and this is what you pay. And you can certainly pay it off ahead of time. So this would be a great place for me to interject that the district has used this before. So the district utilized this before under a previous CEO for some lighting conversion. I.
It's actually Paula Miller, um if you if you remember her, that's when they used this program, just wanted to.
So it was, thank you, Tiana, it was used under Paula Miller. Um, and it was used for lighting conversion. It was just under a million dollars. It was nine hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars worth of conversions for some equipment, and there were some pumps and other things included in that. And the district said, okay, okay, here's our savings, and here's our our payment plan. And I believe at the time it was slated to be paid off over three years. Um, because it was a certain amount of savings, and they could pay that off for three years with their savings. And then the second year, the district just said, we got a little bit of money, we just paid it off. So we we didn't have to wait. There was these, we have a little bit extra, and it was just, so it was done in two years at that point.
Okay, thanks. That's uh, that's good to know. Thank you, Michael.
And I think the intent probably was at the time, um they were they were testing it out to see if it was a viable funding source. Again, this is this is my interpretation of what happened long before I was here. But to do it for such a small amount of just the nine hundred thousand, it was probably a a test of, is it viable funding source? How's it gonna work? And then it worked, and of course Paula Miller moved on from the organization. And then we had a, we did not have a CEO for three years after that, as they did the search. And I think the program just kinda got forgotten and never picked up again. Alright, so how much is the um energy performance contracting gonna cost us? How much is the review of coming in and and doing this review and looking at it cost us? And again, this is set out by the Colorado Energy Office to make sure that it's um easily digestible and 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 um budgeted for all of us organizations, from as large as we are to a another small organization. And the interesting thing on this is the cost is based on how far away you are from the Colorado Energy Office. So being as we're not that far away from from Denver and their office um facilities, um for the entire review of it, we would be under five hundred thousand square feet for review. Um, but we would be over two hundred and fifty thousand square few from view. We are between seventy five and one hundred and fifty miles from the Colorado Energy Office, so it would be twenty five cents a square foot for them to come and do all of the reviews. So this is the memorandum of understanding that we entered in with them um to uh have these initial conversations and be able to bring this to you. The guidelines of the program, we'll go over those real quick. There has to be a guaranteed utility cost savings. It has to be guaranteed by the company that's doing the installation, which goes back to your questionnaire. If they can't guarantee it, then it cannot be done, because they're responsible for that guarantee of the savings. It has to be cash flow positive, there has to be more coming in than would be saved on the project. Um, the three years of monitoring and verification, again, they're required not just to say, send us your utility bills, but actually come in onsite, verify what the equipment is doing, that it's working correctly, that it's achieving the savings that they stated that it would. And the the average weight or um weighted life of the equipment is in there as well. So if they say, we're gonna install a new piece of equipment that has an eight-year lifespan, but you're not gonna realize savings until ten years, then it doesn't, it doesn't fit within the equation as well. Okay, um again, it began twenty eight years ago, um across the state, uh public buildings. We've achieved three hundred and sixty, three hundred and sixteen million kilowatt hours of savings. Um, a hundred and two billion dollars and nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that was from the Pikes Peak Library District. Uh, use of the um single procurement contract, which again is the RFP process that the state has utilized, so we don't have to, and we don't have to spend the man-hours and the time and the employee time running through the entire RFP process, it's already done through the state. And again, as part of that review, what they say is they will look for grant opportunities for us to utilize as well. So this, they will look for state grants, they will look for federal grants, they will look for energy saving grants from municipalities that are within our service area to see if there are any grants that we can utilize for savings on this as well. That is part of the review process. These are some of the examples. And as part of this, two of the things that have been recommended to us over the years in our um public surveys are electronic or electric vehicle charging stations. So this isn't something that the district would look to be installing, but as part of our um energy usage and feedback into the grid, we could look at installing a charging station at each of our three big facilities. Now, those are paying charging stations, just as you've paid a park at the library, you would pay to charge at the library, so those are factored into, would that be able to pay itself back off as well? And it is a service that the public has been asking of the library for quite some time. I was surprised to notice that uh many libraries across the country are now providing charging stations for vehicles. And solar usage. So currently, the library purchases solar credits to supplement our energy bills. So as part of this, we could look into if we put solar panels on the top of our large street buildings, would that affect our energy savings? How much would that be? What would the ongoing maintenance of that be? And is it something that is uh relevant to the energy savings program? I'm gonna skip over this, but again, these are um some of the other um division of local government. So DOLA, we have used DOLA previously, it might be an acronym that you're familiar with. We have used DOLA grants um here at the district, not extensively, but we have certainly utilized them before, and it would be um something that we could look at for utilizing this as well. So if we just look at our energy audit, which we discussed previously from the um facility masters plan, um, we have easily identified one point eight million dollars of work that we know we have to do um at some point. It was has been identified as deferred maintenance, things we need to fix, the building automation system is included within this, Aaron. Um, those are um easily identifiable costs. And then looking at other systems around the district that we know are no longer serviceable, that are um not efficient or need to be replaced, or building sizes have increased and um HVAC and boiler systems have not that we would need to replace, our estimate is eight million dollars. So if all of those projects were looked at by this audit and identified to be viable within the program, there's a possibility that we we could be right around ten million dollars of of work that would need to be done within the facilities. So again, the process is sign the MOU with the state, which we've done, select the energy service company, perform the audit, perform the audit, determine if the investment supports um the solution, and then move forward with it. Um, these are just uh our references from what we utilize within the program. And this is where, when I did internal affairs, I liked to specifically point out, this is not free money. Okay, all of the, all of the hard work is done by the state to make it as easy as possible for us to utilize this program. But this is a loan. This is a loan for that amount. And so if we say it is a million dollar project, the district would be taking on a million dollar loan with those set savings in, those guaranteed savings in our um energy costs to set aside as the payment for that loan over whatever period was selected. So um I like to make sure that I put that out as a as a separate thing at this point, and I am open for any questions.
I'm gonna jump in before Scott goes to town here. Um, so a couple of questions that I have. One, uh is there a I know this is a loan, but is there like a certain investment that we have to make upfront? Or can we basically finance the the whole lot?
Great question. So one hundred percent of the project can be financed, including the cost of the assessment. So at the end of the assessment period, um that twenty five cents per square foot, we could say, you know what, this is not feasible. We do not save enough within this, and we don't wanna do it. Okay, we would be responsible for paying that twenty five cents per square foot at that point in time for whatever it was that they evaluated. Um, which I thought it was in the slides, and I might have skipped over, and I apologize if I was, we were going off on on some other tendents, I wanted to end it as soon as we could. Um, I believe we looked at that seventy thousand, I think, is the estimate.
Eighty, yes.
Yeah, it was seventy, eighty thousand for the estimate. Um, we will be responsible for that at that point. But if at that time we decide, yes, we would like to move forward, that seventy, eighty thousand, whatever that cost ends up being, will be rolled into the financing of the entire project and would be paid out of the savings that we're um realizing from the improvements. So one hundred percent of the project can be rolled into the financing of it.
Perfect. That answered my second question. Perfect, that answered my second question, which was, can we roll the cost of the assessment into the thing, so thank you for addressing that. And then the third question that I have is by signing this MOU or the board passing this resolution tonight, we're effectively committing to the eighty thousand dollars to have that formal assessment done. And then we, like, the, the decision we made later by, um, i- if there's enough savings to warrant doing the project, but the only thing we're committing to is the eighty thousand dollars to have the assessment completed.
Well, so the, the MOU has been signed by the district saying we would, we're willing to enter in the conversations with the Colorado Energy Office, which has already been done. What the board be approving tonight is the ability to go to the next step of talking with those companies to select a, a company or to put out an RFP. So our recommendation is to save the costs since the financial guidelines from the state that they went through with their RFP process are even more strict than ours. And it saves us the, the cost of the district of going through that entire process and it allows us to start sooner. But this would be giving us permission to either select one of those, um, companies that have, uh, been approved by the state and start entering conversations with them to do the contract, and then we would need to bring that contract back to you to say this is the cost. Or to start the RFP process to do that same thing.
Just to clarify that MOU was not any financial commitment, that was that actually we let's talk about it, find out more information. Do you like, because we cannot just come to the board, say, that's a great idea, we don't have any information. So we wanted to do our research before we brought it to you, so that's just wanted to clarify. And the next steps will be more financial commitment to that, that's why we're bringing it to you today to talk about that. Because we have not done assessment, we have not signed any documents saying that we'll pay you eighty thousand dollars for assessment. So all the financial aspects of it, it's, that's what we're discussing today. The first step was, let's gather information, let's do research, let's ask questions. And we had a lot of meetings, we asked a lot of questions to, to actually be informed about that, uh, to present it to all of you today, so just wanted to clarify that and.
Yes, thank you. And, and what we would do, so we would be entering into, um, discussions with the, other, the organization we chose. And then they would, they would do a high overlook of our properties and say, okay, we recommend looking at this many square feet and so your cost is this. And then we would bring that cost back to the board and say, okay, we've, we've talked, we selected the company, we've had the conversations, this is the cost of our, um, survey. Or we would do the entire RFP process and then come back and say, this is the company that we recommend moving forward with from the RFP.
Okay, so I'm just gonna make sure that I'm understanding correctly. That the vote tonight does not carry any financial obligation to it, but allows you to enter into the next phase as far as working with a specific contractor, potentially or identifying who that's going to be and getting an idea of what the site assessment will cost before going in, and that's that eighty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what the financial commitment was based off of the vote tonight, but it sounds like that's zero and we'd have another discussion before additional.
We would be bringing to the board what the cost of the actual audit, the energy audit would be, because we can't determine that until we select our vendor and go through the other process. And they do a high level overview of how many square feet we would be specifically looking at. And so that would be a contract, at that point, we would be bringing back to you a contract, this is the contract for the evaluation process. And then that contract is not paid until the end, um, of the evaluation process, because they're always, um, the caveat of the, the ability to roll that, um, contract cost into the energy saving loan for the installation exists.
Okay, thank you, those are the questions that I have.
And I'm gonna jump in before Scott as well, uh, now you said that there was possibility of grants. If we received a grant, how does that work? Does that go ahead and take care of the portion of the, of whatever's being done?
Yeah, so if, if we receive the grant, again, we would look at that specifically because we know that, um, state grants, um, affect us differently than federal grants. And so we would look at all of the grants that the audit recommended. Um, they have specific individuals on the, on their staff with all of those contractors to look at the organization, what grants are available, what projects are brought up and to see if there's anything that would be available to go for. Now, if we did receive a grant, um, then that would just, it just comes off the top, right? So if we got a grant for ten thousand dollars for a specific component of the project, it would just reduce our overall payment by that amount.
Could we, uh, in this, uh, process, could we apply for grants on a yearly basis? Or is it just a one-time, or you don't know, I don't?
So also those grants, I, I, I assume that we could, but, um, speaking from experience, most of those grants are for installation of something as an upfront cost to help you defer the cost of installing an energy efficient, um, system or, um, component. And so once you've installed it, a grant for, you know, Attaboy, you did a good job putting it in usually doesn't exist. Some of those do exist with, um, some local utility companies, will it give you some ongoing credits? But as grants, I have not seen those, there may, something might exist, I can't say conclusively, but.
Okay, I just, uh, but there is a possibility we could apply for additional grants if available. Scotty, your turn.
Believe it or not, I have more questions right now.
Right, any other questions for board members?
Just while I still have the microphone here, just based on, on our, on our last decision, I wanted to jump in real quick and just say that, um, I personally am very grateful for the support that the board has provided for the Penrose Safety and Security Improvements over the last year and a half. The improvement that I personally see at Penrose, when I go down there and I see families laughing and, and running through the facility and, and people enjoying the facility and just a more general sense of calm and well-being and more of a library feel across the entire facility. Are the staff, everyone I've talked to, um, no, I can't speak for everyone, but everyone I've, I've spoken to about it and myself and my team are exceptionally grateful for the support that you provided for us to, to specifically work on that, that facility that needed some, needed some love.
I, I do have one more question, I know we talked a lot about energy savings, but in somewhere in that report, you talked a little about water. Uh, would there, does this also include any of the water savings that we could have? Or is it just energy savings?
Um, they do lump water savings into energy savings, so there would be some, some looks at that, um, as far as irrigation that we have. But it is really difficult unless you have a, a super, super old system that has a massive leak in it or anything like that to realize enough savings with some of those installations that it would be considered an offset, but we would certainly look through some of that.
Alright, thank you, um, we'll go ahead and have someone read the motion and then get a second, and then we'll come move into discussion.
I move that the Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees approve the proposal to partner with the Colorado Energy Office as presented.
Alright, can I get a sec?
I second the motion.
Right, great, any discussion by the board on this, uh, decision item?
Uh, I was just gonna say, um, we were looking at this up in Woodland Park, so I'm fairly familiar with the program. I appreciate, uh, Michael, your presentation here and, and the opportunity this has. Like Michael said, I'm not, you know, I'll just reiterate, this isn't free money, we're gonna be taking on a loan to do this, but it's a loan that, you know, we can pay out of, you know, realized savings, so it should have a fairly neutral impact on the budget, so despite having some costs associated with it, um, it's, this isn't going to come out of our, you know, operational budget per save a, as a new line item. And so, um, with that being said, uh, this isn't something that increases the, the cost to taxpayers. This, this ends up being neutral and then in long-term, um, once this gets paid off, it would, um, it would realize savings for the district, I believe, so I'm, I'm really excited about this, and again, appreciate Michael, uh, and your team going through this.
I, I do have, uh, a, a cool question, um, um, Michael, you stated that once the assessments have been done, and if this is approved, then you have the ability to um, use those RFPs that have already been done and choose the proper vendor. And then when we enter into contract, that is something that you would bring towards this board for us to review, is that correct?
That is correct, so, um, our hope is to utilize the, the existing RFP process that the state has done. So we don't have to go through the whole thing again, and that's realized savings for the district as well. And then we would get an actual contract from them for the cost of the audit. Not on any of the projects, it would be the cost of the audit for all of our facilities. And then that's what we would bring to the board, saying this is the, the identified cost for the intensive audit of all of our systems. And that's what we've been to the board for signing. And then my assumption, based off of my estimation of our square footage we would be looking at, is that it would be below the one hundred thousand dollar limit and where we were required to bring it to the board. But we would still be bringing it to the board regardless, because it's a smaller part of a larger, longer-term project. And then once Scott made a, or Aaron made a great point, um, at the end of the project, those realized savings are still ours. So, uh, ongoing past whatever the investment period is to pay off the, the project, whatever that investment savings is, is still realized for the district going forward. And would actually be probably more because energy costs continue to increase.
And may I add, Madam President, few comments there. So that's what Michael said, also just, uh, way to make sure that even though it was below a hundred thousand dollars, we also understand your statutory responsibilities. As a board, you do, you are responsible for our buildings and budget. So, and it has actually impact, long-term impact on our facilities. So that's why we believe that that's ethical and right to bring all of that to you for your approval and vote. So even like Michael said, it's below the financial guidelines, right? Just roughly eighty thousand or seventy thousand, so you will be involved in every step of it. And just you will be able to ask questions and vote on it.
Thank you, any further comments from the board, Ms. Benz, Ms. Dugan, Ms. Gonzalez? Any other discussion on? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor as of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Alright, any opposed? Alright, the motion carries and we will move on to discussion of the bylaws changes, um, to give an update on that, I, this is more in-depth of what we discussed in governance. Also do wanna give an update related to the, uh, Joint Appointing Committee and some possible changes related to that. Um, so three items that come up for discussion here. Um, one is related to virtual meetings policy, one is related to questions that we had about, um, the paragraph, and I have to pull up the section, um, but just about, uh, termination of a board member's, um, service if, if no one else has been appointed yet.
If you mean to read it or see about sharing my screen, so this, um, yeah, so this came up, I know we, uh, talk, I interjected myself, uh, into the governance.
Go ahead.
Talking through this, and, uh, so the recommended language from the attorney was the Joint Appointment Committee shall facilitate the process of advertising any vacancy and soliciting applications, shall select top, oh, I went to the wrong spot, didn't I?
That was the wrong one, yeah, that, that was the other recognition, that wasn't the legal one, yep, no worries.
Oh, I lost the other one, but that was it.
Uh, the other one was under, I think it was section nine of article, uh, gotta look at my notes here. Article four, is that the right? No.
Are we talking about if, uh, board?
The trustee's term has expired and there has not been an appointment made by the joint committee.
Yeah, so it's, isn't it page seventy-eight if the appointing authority has not filled an available?
Yes, that's it.
It's page seventy-eight of the board packet.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at, it's article two, section two. Alright, we, yeah, we have looked at changing, we had discussed whether we should change the terminology there or not. Um, as well as, um, just statutory, um, things related to that, so. Aaron, if you wanted to continue your comments, now that we located the spot.
Oh, um, yeah, I'm not seeing, um, like I'm on page seventy-eight and there's like basically, like, oh, there, if the appointing authority is not filled on available board position at the expiration of the current trustee's term unless the board votes to excuse the trustee from service after expiration of the term, the trustee shall remain on the board until such time as a successor to the expired position is appointed. So that effectively gives us the ability to excuse someone from Dora's position where she's still here nine months later.
But if, if I'm not mistaken, the way that I'm reading that is, is that if we vote not to, then we're telling that a trustee that they have to be on even if they do not, do not want to. So at that point, they can resign, is that kind of the process?
We also have the caveat of missing three meetings, so they could just bail if they, like, if they really couldn't do that, I mean, um, there, like, there's other provisions in here that, that effectively allow them to go, I mean, they could resign, they could miss meetings, there's several options in there, but effectively, yes, we would have to proactively vote to excuse someone from service here, or they would the understanding is that they would be on the board at that point. Until a new person is appointed.
Yeah, and, and the original language of that section is what was reviewed and so, um, the, the changes we discussed making that from turn, changing from terminate to votes to excuse, I mean, we could make that, but the original language i- is fine under legal review.
And Debbie was okay, Debbie Makins was okay with that, our lawyer.
Yeah, there's nothing statutorily that prevents this.
We're I have reservations about that, but I'm curious to see if anybody else has any questions or comments about that.
Any other comments from the board on this section, Ms. Benz, Ms. Gonzalez? Um, any strong feelings about whether we would adjust the wording from votes to excuse or takes express action to terminate, leaving the original legal language?
Uh, I mean, I, I, I just uh, the every board member has two terms that they serve, at the end of their second term. Or, or I should say after they're allowed to serve a second term, because they still have to go through the, the process after the first term, if they're allowed to do two terms. At the end of that, there still hasn't been somebody that, um, has been appointed. I, I just, I don't like the way that we're forcing somebody to have to remain on the board until the appointing authority, um, appoints a new member. Um, and yes, I do understand there are ways that they can get out of that, they can resign, they could be voted off.
Scott, your audio is in and out and it's really tough to, to hear you at times.
Alright, hang on, let me see if I can switch. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Alright, I am sorry, I'm I'm at the mercy of the place that I'm staying at's internet connection, so I, I apologize for that, so, um, I, I, I don't like the, the, the thought that we're forcing somebody to remain on the board and that they, if they don't want to be on the board anymore, then they have to resign their position. I I don't like the 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 thought that we're forcing somebody to remain on the board and that they, if they don't want to be on the board anymore, then they have to resign their position. Um, to me, at the end of their second term, if they're allowed to serve twice or for two terms. That's really according to the bylaws, that's the end of their term. But yet we're putting this caveat on then that you have to remain on the board. Unless we vote you off. Or you resign, or you go through the whole termination process, because you've missed three board meetings. Um, I I I don't like the way that we would be treating previous board members or board members to do that. Um. I I I don't like the, I don't, I just don't like this this statement, I I'm I'm fine with with maybe changing the word from shall remain. To could remain and remove the um, the whole voting process. Um, from from that statement.
Yeah, we could remove the, because we had made that change to votes removed, we could just leave express um, action to terminate. And we could change shall to may, um, and that would.
There you go, that would.
If we if we, so we could reject the changes that we put in there initially during discussion. And like I said, yeah, just changing shall to. Re may, that would, that would mean that they can continue if they're able to continue providing service, but they could also leave if they needed to.
I would.
Any thoughts on that? I mean, technically they can still resign, so I'm not sure that that distinction is necessary um.
My, my concern with changing that to May is based off of the bylaws, whose discretion? Is it in as to whether or not that trustees remains on the board? And so I think that gets us into some. Um, uncertain waters, so if we want to change it to May, I'm okay with that. Um, but I think we need a little bit more clarity around it, um. Something to um, at the trustee's discretion, so something like that uh may remain on the board. I don't know, eh, it whether they say I can't continue to do this or not. Based off of the the May clause versus a resignation, I don't know that I see much of a difference, either way. If the board doesn't explicitly excuse someone from that remaining on the board. Then they're the one saying I can't continue doing this, and so I don't know that I understand the difference in um. Using May. Versus just a resignation, either way, they're gonna have to say I can't continue to do this anymore. So I understand your concern, Scott, I just don't know that I get practically what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, I mean, the whole voting thing, uh, are are you in agreement that we could remove that?
Yeah, we'll just, we can just revert back to the original language there. Um, because I don't think votes, a vote is necessary.
Okay, cuz that that actually would go back to the whole appointing authority question and can we really keep somebody on the board? Without the appointing authority. Saying it's okay to keep somebody on the board, because they're the ones that appoint the uh trustees to begin with. But but regardless, if you guys are okay with just removing the votes, that that's fine. As to the question of May, then maybe we just take that whole thing out and just say. Um, to the effect that the trustee can uh resign his or her position from the board. If they choose not to serve after their second term. Or something to that effect. I I'm I'm fine with that too, but we would need to call specifically out that they would need to resign.
I would be fine with adding the language. Potentially then of unless the board takes express action or the trustee resigns, like that would be fine.
Scott, could you read what you are thinking based off of taking out the voting language, I just. I've got red here and if I take the red out, it doesn't quite make sense, I'm not sure what you're looking at.
Uh, okay, so hang on, let me read this real quick. Um. Or so take out the unless the board takes. Uh, I'm sorry, unless the board votes to excuse the trustee from service. After expiration of the term, so that whole sentence in those between those two commas. And just keep the board position at the expiration of the current trustee's term. The trustee shall or the trustee may remain or resign their position. On the board until such time as a successor. Is appointed.
Yeah, I could go with that, I was working on something a little bit different where that would basically take the commas out like you said, and so at the end it would say the current trustee's term. Uh. It is desirable for the trustee to remain on the board. Until such a time as a successor to the expired position is appointed. Or they may resign if they can no longer fulfill a commitment, something to that effect.
Okay. So I think, yeah, I think so, well, yeah.
We're gonna do the same thing, I I don't know.
Say that one more time, though, Erin, if you wouldn't mind.
If the appointing authority has not filled an available board position at the expiration of the current trustee's term. It is desirable, or it is desired that the trustee shall remain on the board until such time as a successor to the expired position is appointed. Or they may resign their position, they cannot maintain the commitment, so so.
Yeah, I think we'd have to, just from my conversations with legal, I think we would have to say may remain or may resign. I think that it is desired wouldn't, would be statutorily confusing in terms of what it meant. But I I agree overall with the concept. So we could um then delete the the portion between the commas then um. And based on both what both of you are saying. Um, it would read. Um, if the appointing authority has not filled an available board position at the expiration of the current trustee's term. The trustee may remain on the board until such a time as a successor to the expired position is appointed or may um.
I think, I think we go back to what Scott had, and I like the may resign on the front side of that, so.
Okay.
Uh, expiration of the current trustee's term, the trustee may resign or shall remain on the board.
Or may remain on the board. Cuz to me shall and may are too separate.
Two separate.
Shall is, well, that's some. Shall is more of a command of of somebody staying on the board.
Right.
You shall stay on the board. The the other thing is may stay on the board, we still want to give them that opportunity to make that decision on whether or not they want to stay on the board.
Listen, may resign or.
Shall.
If they don't, may not, if they don't resign, they shall remain.
Yeah, so that that basically means that the shall remain means the board's recognizing that they're remaining.
How about we just get rid of shall and just say remain?
I like the shall.
We, yeah. I think this shall make sense in terms of clarifying. That they are still a member of the board in in a um. In a real sense, um. But I think, yeah, may resign or shall remain makes most sense in terms of my understanding of. Of what legal counsel has said in terms of the meanings of those words and how they impact um, the functionality of the bylaws. But that would give room for someone to leave if if they did wanna go and they didn't feel that way, they wouldn't feel forced to stay.
I agree with that, I think that sounds right.
Okay, Ms. Benz, Ms. Gonzalez, any input on that?
Dora's recusing herself from this conversation.
I was just gonna say, shouldn't Dora weigh in here? Um, I'm I'm okay with it, um. I mean, I think it is important to be talking about this, obviously in light of Dora's situation, um. And I wanna make sure Julie, like you said, that we're. Working within this, you know, statutory guidelines um and not changing anything. I mean, will will this? Wha- what we're what we're discussing right now, will this mean that we have to then go back again and have legal review it again? At this point, or are we able to make this change and agree this evening?
We could, we could pass it as um pending, you know, final legal review. Um, and then have them take a quick look again since we have made edits, um, I think the edits would be consistent with. What they've explained to me, um, but we would want them to have a final look at it, so we could certainly pass pending fa- final review.
Okay.
So it'd be, it would be, we would be doing the motion as amended, you know, pending final review, so.
Just wanted to check on that.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask you about, is part of your hesitation here the mixing of may and shall in this?
Yeah, cuz it's like one way we say you have an option and then the second we don't, you don't have anything, you have to do it.
So if, what if at the end we just leave it the way it is right now, take out the spacing between the commas? And so it says the trustee shall remain on the board until such time as a successor to the expired position is appointed. Unless the trustee resigns their position. And that way it provides that out still, but doesn't end up with this this mix may shall verbiage. Is that better?
It. It it doesn't, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter to me. Um. It it, to me, it says the same thing, but however we wanna, we wanna put it, if we wanna put the resignation towards the beginning. Uh, and include the shall remain on the board after that, that's that's fine. I'll I'll be okay, I'll be okay with that. Where we would say, you know, after trustee's term, trustee may resign. Um. Or the trustee shall remain on the board until such time as exista- successor to the expired position is appointed. In other words, what we were just discussing, that's that's fine.
Okay, if you're good with that, I think. I'm good with that too.
Okay. Right, and then the the second item was in section. Let me find it. It was in article four, section nine, virtual attendance, there was a discussion of whether or not that should be one third or one quarter for virtual attendance. Um, so I did wanna make sure that we uh had a chance to review that in terms of preference in that number, um. So governance brought that back to review the which which number was preferred, anyway, any any comments on that potential change currently, it's at one third. Um, which um translates both to. Uh, the twelve month, the twelve per year or the minimum six per year, that's. We've never used, but that is in our bylaws um of meetings. Um, if it was a quarter, um. We'd have to delineate what that meant if there were only six meetings a year, um, not that we've ever, I don't think, done that. Um, but that is the minimum required um in the bylaws. So. Any thoughts?
So um, I'm fine leaving it as a third, I know we had some discussion about this and governance in at the last board meeting, um. You know, we we decided not to force people uh through the bylaws, have their cameras on, and most of us have had our cameras on. Pretty much the whole meeting, because, you know, we're we're putting people here who are professionals. And so I think we and we make sure that, like, we understand that this is what the professional expectation is. But this provides um flexibility in case things come up throughout the year. That, you know, not everything that we know, not everything that we think is gonna happen throughout the year happens the way that we we thought it would. And so this provides a little bit of flexibility for the trustees that are here. Um, but still understanding that, you know, we have the other language that we put in here that said it's desirable for everyone to be in person. Um, or at least we talked about adding language like that, and so I think, you know, understanding what the professional. Expectations are of trustees, that whether someone's here for, you know, online for, like. Three or four meetings is less important than the actual. Level of engagement we have from those trustees during the meetings and throughout the year. Um, so all that to say, I think we have strong professionals on this board. I believe that everyone acts in their best professional judgment and meets those expectations, providing a little bit of additional flexibility um to. Account for things that might come up, I don't have a problem with, because we have. People following a professional expectation here.
Okay, other comments or discussion? I'll start, start calling out names, Mr. Taylor, do you have any comments on that one?
Uh, I I think everybody understands what my position is, I think one third's too much. Um, I was willing to keep it at two, um, and in fact, I was okay with making it a fourth. But um, I'm in the minority, so um. I I I still don't think that, I think a third is way too many, but.
All right, Ms. Gonzalez, any thoughts?
Um. I, as uh Erin said, uh, we are professionals and uh. As we sit around this table or any, any other meeting, we we just have to be professional and. Uh, carry out our duties as it, as we represent our community. I think that this could be clarified for board members when they go onboarding and just kinda give them that, you know, the scenario that. We expect professionalism because that's what's expected, uh, and uh, and knowing that. We're all gonna do our best to attend, I I know that if you have. Not only women, but men with small children, sometimes those things come up. Uh, so we we have to be flexible in some of that, and uh, if uh. Your spouse travels and, you know, you have to take care of the children and one is sick, well, that's just the way it goes sometimes, so. I think that we have to be flexible, but we can uh during the onboarding process, whatever that looks like. Just um reiterate that we, in this organization, we really strive to uh. Uh, have a professional discussions and uh and be professional at what we do, so. Uh, I I know Scott, you're you're saying, you know, less, um. I, it's just, uh, I guess what I'm thinking of is just younger, younger people that come on to these uh. Boards, and that's one of the things that we need to engage some of our younger community. Um, they're, they're uh probably not that. As we get older, we're not engaged in a library, we are very much so, but we're more flexible than someone that is younger with children. So I I and I, I tell everybody, I could never do the work I'm doing now when I was working, it was impossible. Was just. So.
Thanks, Dora. Hmm, Erin, do you have any, uh, Benz, do you have any comments? I'm just trying to keep the conversation moving here.
Sure, I thought you meant me, um. I I think I made my thoughts pretty clear on this last meeting, um, and I'll just. Uh, summarize by saying that I don't, I I'm. I'm good with what we have right now, because I don't think that you go through the process of getting onto this board. I think it takes. A lot, you have to jump through a lot of hoops, you have to go through a lot of interview, you know, I don't think you come on to this board to then. Just kind of go, I'm not gonna show up, I think being remote, you know, is just part of our lives now and. Um, yeah, so I think what we have is. I I I said this last meeting, I think it's just right.
Okay, uh, Ms. Dugan or anyone else have further thoughts?
So I I I would just wanna say one more thing, and then I'll I'll stop, um, so this doesn't supersede. Uh, or or does it replace the whole excused um process? I I just wanna point that out, uh, the the other thing is, um, I do have four kids. I do work full time, and unfortunately, like right now, I am not there because. One, we decided to make this a virtual meeting and two, um, I'm actually visiting Chicago uh for a school for my son. Um, so it it's, I I I do this, I be, I'm there as much as I possibly can. Um, so it, it's, I, I, I do this, I be, I'm there as much as I possibly can. I think I've only missed, uh, two other meetings. Um, and again, if you're excused, then it doesn't count against these, these, the one-third or one-fourth. It's just, you're excused from the meeting, you don't have to be there. Um, I do understand that some people wanna be there regardless, like I am now. I'm technically on vacation and I'm joining. But that would still fall under the, the two or the fourth of the meetings, um, overall. So, um, I just, just wanted to say that, no, I'll keep quiet.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, Scott, but I, I think that actually pushes me even further into this camp because I'd rather someone like, like, I'd rather you join remotely than miss the meeting altogether. I would rather you be engaged in what's going on than say, oh, I've only, I've already missed two meetings. If I, I don't know what's gonna happen for the next, you know, four months, so I'll just ask to be excused from this one because I had this thing pop up. I'd rather someone join remotely and engage in this meeting rather than excused absence. So.
Appreciate both your comments. I'm gonna, um, let Ms. Dugan add any comments if she has any and then we'll move towards the vote. Or not to, to vote, to the next discussion, I'm sorry.
Um, thank you very much. I, um, I am definitely one who has been struggling to make sure I, I attended tonight because I do have a family matter going on that was excused well before the last meeting, but I, I do agree, uh, remote is just the way the culture is. It's, it's what moves people. Um, I think forward into more service and, you know, professionalism and, and participation are, you know, just very important. So I think, I, I just say ditto to, you know, Erin, Erin and, and Dora so far, so thank you.
Thank you all for your discussion on that. The final, um, thing that was included and it's not in the edits here, but just, um, and this is part of the update I'd meant to give earlier, just on the joint appointing committee. Um, they did meet on Friday, they did talk about process. Um, and they, they did discuss being willing to facilitate the entire process currently in our bylaws that belongs to governance committee. Um, the library does not have the statutory ability to nominate someone. We, our current bylaws and the way we currently work, you know, we do review those applications and submit our recommendations. It's non-binding, binding, and it's not required by law for us to participate in that, although we, if we have a strong feeling that we would like to, we could continue, uh, discussing with the joint appointing committee, committee, what that looks like. Um, if we do wanna step back from that process more fully, um, we do have sample language that we could, um, remove that from the governance committees, um, duties and just put a, a, something in that says that the joint appointing committee, um, will facilitate the process and by that meaning they accept the applications, review the applications and do the interviews. Um, so that was something that was brought for discussion, so I just wanted to feel out the board's thoughts on whether we wanted to make any changes or postpone that until there's further discussions with the committee.
So I'm fine with that, but that seems like to pull all that language out of the bylaws right now is gonna be a lot of work. So I'd say, um, if that's the way we wanna handle this upcoming process, I think that's fine, but let's not make any changes of the bylaws about it right now. And then we can, we can spend another couple seconds. I'd rather go and get this version of the bylaws passed. I know, um, governance has worked on this for months and so get this done. And then we can have more discussion about what that means to pull it out. Uh, I think there still needs to be a connection point between the district and the joint, um, appointing committee. And so maybe governance moves into more of a liaison type role, uh, between the district and the joint committee. Um, providing needs assessments or whatever that looks like. Um, I, I, I don't know, but I think we need to have more discussion about that before we start having it. Again, I'm in, I'm fine with that. Them taking that on, I just don't know that it's directly applicable to the conversation we're having about the bylaws right now. It seems like it's too much to try to navigate that.
I agree with.
Any other thoughts?
I would say I just agree with Erin's thoughts. I'm honestly, at this moment, just too tired to even go further. Let's just move forward what we've worked with and then, um, yeah, and I agree, I think it's fine for them to move it forward. But let's just, you know, move for a vote and, uh, get these passed and then go to the next step.
Okay. Any other discussion around that one? Okay. Um, we do have a clause that we, uh, in governance already put in here saying the board's process shall be subject to change pending changes to the joint committee's process. So that is already in there and then we can enter in that conversation with them as a separate process and figure out if we need any um, other types of agreements in addition to change the bylaw and everything of that to, to get all that sorted out or any other, um, you know, further conversations. So maybe we can have governance, um, entering to some conversations with the joint appointing committee about what that process looks like and what it would take to, um, on both our ends, formalize that change. Um, all right, so then the only changes would be then to, um, the portion that we discussed for allowing, um, board members to resign if they're at the end of their term and do not wish to continue in the case that their vacancy has not been filled. So that would be the only, uh, amendment we would be making here. Okay, so then we'll go ahead and, um, unless there's anything I've, I've missed, I don't believe so, um, then without objection, we'll go ahead and move to decision item twenty-five dash nine dash four, which is the Board of Trustees bylaws, which we just discussed. Um, so it would be the changes that we already had in the document, um, plus the amendments we discussed. I'll go ahead and ask for a call for the emotion, um, to pass as amended pending legal review of the changes, um, and then we'll second that and have any further discussion.
So, uh, I'll go and move that the Pike's P, Collaborative District Board of Trustees approve the Board of Trustees bylaws as amended. And I will stop there. I think having it go through another legal review is fine. We're gonna have to make other changes probably in the future, and this isn't gonna be immediately enacted. Uh, we don't have, like, we've still got another three months before anything in here. So I would say without putting any sort of squiggly language on it saying, if the attorney approves it, we're good to go. Let's just approve this. That's why I worded it the way that I did. And then we can still.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, then I'll go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor of the motion as amended. Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The ayes have it, so the motion carries and, um, I believe that is the last item on the agenda for the evening, so we will now move into public comment. I believe we had five of those, so Jeremiah, if you could, um, call up the folks for that and set the timer for them, please.
Yep, and the timer, just everybody knows because we're sharing this, it's gonna be small on the corner of my box, so I'll still vocalize it when the three minutes are up. Um, but you'll see the countdown clock in, in, in my box. Um, when you're called up, I'll click to ask you to unmute and then you should be able to unmute yourself. Um, so the first up is Veronica Baker. Veronica, you should be able to unmute now. And now I don't see, oh, there you are. I see that you're unmuted Veronica, but I can't hear you. I'll, I'll circle back Veronica, cuz it seems like there's an issue on your end. I do show that you're muted, but we can't hear you, so I'll.
Can you?
Oh, now I can hear you, yes.
Okay. All right. I'd like to begin by expressing concern about the recent departure from PPLD's regular in-person monthly meeting schedule. Not since the height of COVID have we seen a virtual meeting stand in for the regular in-person monthly board meeting. I understand that not every trustee can attend every meeting, that's reasonable. But with seven trustees, is it truly not possible to have a forum in person tonight? What's more troubling is that virtual meetings strip away accountability. Citizens can't read body language, see facial expressions, or know whether trustees are fully engaged. In this format, it is far too easy to mute or walk away, and that undermines public trust. This board is entrusted with decisions involving millions of taxpayer dollars. In-person meetings are not just about procedure, they are about transparency, accountability, and building back public trust. What message does it send when enough trustees cannot pri- prioritize their commitments? July's meeting was already canceled and now September's has shifted to a virtual despite longstanding notice as an in-person meeting. I believe we can do better and I believe the community expects better. Regarding progress in serving the Rockremen area, I understand the ten thousand square foot building donation has shifted to a purchase opportunity. But even at that projected cost, the price remains competitive with the Ruth Hawley Library purchase. Considering the high cost of renting, owning, and building in the Northwest, this seems like a strong starting point for negotiations. It's also important to remember that the need for extensive gutting and remodeling stems from the trustee's decision to close the old Rockremen Library, a location that served our community successfully for thirty-five years. I urge you to pursue a Northwest site with real commitment. While a few options have been mentioned, there has been little visible progress toward actually restoring a library to Rockremen. And finally, we have not forgotten about the uncertainty surrounding the Cheyenne Mountain Library. You might argue it's too early to discuss lease renewal, but the public does not share that view. For this community, the future of that branch is not a distant concern, it is an immediate one. I urge you to take these matters seriously, show up for your commitments and communicate openly with the people you serve. We want to see PPLD succeed, but that requires trust, accountability, and transparency from this board. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Eric Lundberg. Eric, you should be able to unmute now?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So first I'd like to thank Tammy for the presentation about the new ILS. Um, I'm very excited about that and, and the capabilities that will bring, so thank you for working on that. Um, it's also good to hear about the discussions that have taken place about finding a new library location in Rockremen. I hope those discussions continue so our, our library can reopen as soon as possible as it's sorely missed in our community. Um, and although I haven't heard it discussed during these meetings, I think it's clear the Rockremen closure has had a significant impact on the library's foot traffic and, and circulation. Looks like I, I can't share my screen unfortunately. Uh, but I was gonna point out that that circulation chart shared earlier in the meeting uh, did not include Rockremen, even though it was open for nearly two-thirds of that time period. Um, I think if Rockremen had been included, it would have ranked sixth. Um, it's the sixth busiest, uh, library location, so that's, that closure certainly had an impact. And if you look at the, the, um, the door count and circulation, um, that's been in the board packets every month, you can see it's decreased pretty significantly um, every single month of the year. Between, um, the door count has decreased between six and twenty percent every month for a year-to-date reduction of twelve percent. And the, um, the circulation as well, uh, it's been down every month with a year-to-date reduction of five percent. So I think, you know, there should be more discussion and, and recognition of the impact that, um, the Rockremen closure has had on the library system. Um, and again, it's, it's good to hear that there are discussions taking place and, and I hope they continue. And I, I hope we get our library back as soon as possible. So thanks for listening and, and thanks for your time.
All right, and next up we have Jade Stone. Jade, you should be able to unmute.
Perfect. Hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect. Hello, my name is Jade and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Um, my life has been deeply shaped by public libraries like the PPLD. Growing up, the library was a constant in my life. It was one of the very first places where I truly felt welcome to explore and grow. I utilized the library so often from such a young age that I would keep creating new accounts almost weekly due to me consistently forgetting my library kimpin card. Um, but even with those small struggles, the library always gave me what I needed. A doorway into new stories and genres, a space in which I could figure out my, at my own pace, what themes I liked, what writing styles, what made me comfortable, what made me uncomfortable, and sometimes why. I wouldn't just come for the books, it was also the people. The staff who took their time to share their love of reading helped me realize that learning and discovery were available to me free of charge. Access to free media is amazing in its own right, but libraries have always been more than their inventory. They serve as an important third space where people of all ages, all backgrounds, and all situations can come to learn, to grow, and to connect. Today, the library remains not just a resource for myself, but also in my work. As I'm a direct care worker with individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, I see firsthand how valuable library programs are. From independent living and financial literacy workshops to hobby classes and free art resources, the library continues to enrich both the lives of me and my students. I want to stress that these are not small things, they are life-changing opportunities that give people confidence, joy, connection, and independence, so thank you. The PPLD holds countless resources for many members of our community, especially those without reliable transportation or financial means. For them, the library isn't just helpful, it's essential. When I was younger, I didn't have the freedom to buy books or to drive across town. Having a nearby library made all the difference for me, and I know it could make that same difference for so many others. That's why I'm not only here to thank the PPLD for its excellent resources, but to advocate for a new library in the Powers Corridor on the east side of town. It would open the doors for countless of people who deserve the same opportunities and resources that shaped me into who I am today and the same resources that other people have with libraries in their area. I urge you to consider this, not just for the shelves that will be filled with books, but for the lives that will be filled with possibility. Libraries like the PPLD, like you all, don't just cer- store knowledge, they expand futures. Thank you so much for your time and for the work that you do to make our community stronger. Thank you.
And next up, and I believe this next commenter is sharing the same feed, Zoom feed as Jade, is Hayes Hendrick. You should be able to unmute.
Yes, um, it's Hedrick.
Oh, I'm very sorry.
That's okay.
He's Hedrick.
So I just first wanna say thank you so much for giving us time to speak here. This is lovely having forums for such a good resource. Um, I wanted to start by saying, just like my coworker Jade, I have always been using libraries from the age of, I think, five or six. Um, they were some of the first places my parents would bring me as a way to have extra learning time outside of school. It was a place where I could stay before getting picked up after school. It was a place where I could just go to hang out with my friends and read a couple of books we liked and talk about them. Um, the first place I ever drove after buying my car was the Round Rock Public Library in Texas. Um, and I think that PPLD is just one of the best libraries I've ever used, and I wanna highlight that. Um, I've tried a few different libraries in a few different places and they all have their ups and downs, of course. Um, like accessibility is a concern, safety is a concern, all these many, many concerns, things to tackle. But I have always consistently thought over the s- several years I've lived here now that this is the best library system I've used. The fact that I can use it all the way out in Monument is awesome. And I just wanna highlight that PPLD has done so much for me and what we do in our work, uh, working with individuals with disabilities. Having a third space that's not somewhere just to buy stuff is incredibly important. Um, especially because even just the act of buying stuff can be emotionally coercive to a lot of, to a lot of the people we surround ourselves with. And having a place where all we gotta do is what we have to do with us. We bring our work, we, we use a computer, we use the maker space. We, we might even talk about the video games in there, we might even go check out some magazines and read about them. All this stuff that we can do is just through the insane generosity of this library system. And I just wanna thank you guys so much for your wonderful work. Thank you.
And the final sign up for public. And the final sign up for public comment is Carla Powers. Carla, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, thank you very much. This is Carla Powers, eight oh nine one nine. There are so many things I could be talking about. Um first of all, it comes to my head. Um we have a very successful summer reading program too. Um where each child received a Frosty, a five dollar coupon to Josh and John's, a crumble cookie, a new book, and a pass to Wilson Ranch Pool. We had a fun end of the year program par- party with complimentary Domino's pizza along with a writing contest and a drawing. We had a hundred and nineteen participants, which is more than two of Pike's Peak Library District's branches. And fifty-four percent finished, which and I guess the completion rate for Pike's Peak Library District was forty-two percent. Now, I'm not blaming that on us. I think it's just our area up here and how much we love libraries. Um when you, when do you, okay, another thing that I could bring, talk about is um the Rockremen Library situation, ISMT, um the donation and other options. We love hearing up updates on those things up here. It gives us hope that you guys are still listening to us and are still going to bring us a library in this area. And it concerns me when Cheyenne Mountain Library is not um discussed. You're eleven months out from when the lease runs out. Um it seems like it's time that normally traditionally you'd be talking about the leases. Um the virtual meeting, I think that's been talked about. The retreat, there's a retreat that you guys are having September twenty-six, which is a week and a half away. Um it's not on the website. Um you'd think that you'd want RSVPs for something like this. It'd just be nice to know where it's gonna be located, um what times and other logistics. Um so so it'd be more inviting to the public to come and join in. Um the public, I expect the agenda will be posted twenty-four hours out, but it'd be handy to have it sooner so people decide when they want it to come. Um I wish that Dora, Dora's in a tough spot. And I hope that she understands that nobody's gonna be upset. At least we're not if she just decides to not attend meetings anymore. This has been really super long for her to have to keep coming to meetings. The one thing that I am gonna pick out to speak about about this whole thing is um that Wayne Williams came and spoke to the Internal Affairs meeting about um the poll. We talked about that a little bit at the meeting and Aaron Salt has talked about this. Seventy percent said that of the poll said that they vote for deep tavoring. No matter what, no matter what we do with this district, we are so underfunded. This is a chance to do something about this. I think this is the time to do it. The whole Northwest part of the city is watching you guys and listening to you. If you treat us well and you open up a Rockremen library, we'll do that. We'll help you with that. Okay, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you for all the public comments. Appreciate you coming out tonight and staying for a rather lengthy meeting. So thank you for coming and engaging with the library. That is the last of our items for this evening. So without objection, I will go ahead and adjourn us at seven fifty-three PM.